Call to the public, Jaime Chamberlain. State your name and your address for the record, Mr. Chamberlain, please.
Hi, I'm Chamberlain, 1670 North Iron Gate Drive, Gales, Arizona. I see that you have today on the budget, on the budget agenda item, support for the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority as well as the Chamber of Commerce as well. I'm very, very pleased that it's on the, on the agenda and that you're talking about it. And I really appreciate it on behalf of all the members and all the stakeholders that represent the Greater Nogales State, Santa Cruz County Port Authority. Just as a little bit of an update, where I see that probably everyone's driven around town and seen that the SR 189 project in Mariposa is about a little over seventy, almost seventy-five percent done. We have a projected date to have that finished sometime in September. We're under budget as well and about eight months in under time period as well. So we're very pleased about that. And some of the other things that we're working on are the ADOT is on the interchange for Ruby Road and Rio Rico Drives. I testified in front of the ADOT board last week to try and get on the five-year plan. We're not officially on the five-year plan, but there's a very good possibility that we do get on it, especially if we end up finding the funding for that. So we're still actively pursuing the opportunities that we have now with the federal funding, with the Transportation Act and the Infrastructure Act. Hopefully that'll come about. We're also still looking at the feasibility study for the DeCincini Port of Entry. And that's not as much money as the interchange would cost, but it's about half a million dollars still. And we're still looking at some funding opportunities for that as well. So we're still being very, very active in, for infrastructure projects. Hopefully everyone sees a value to what we're doing and hopefully you'll start to see a tremendous change in, in the, in the landscape of Nogales here pretty soon. Hopefully we'll be able to drive around a lot safer and a lot faster. And that's pretty much what we're working on right now. And I have an invitation for you, Mayor. Next Wednesday, the governor will be in town between 10 and 12 o'clock in the morning. He's just called me a little while ago to tell me he'd like to come and do a ribbon cutting at my facility. So I'm kind of really doing everything fast here to put something together. So he's going to be on the ground for about two hours next Wednesday. So I'd like to see if, if you'd like to be with us there. We also have a closed-door meeting as well, a smaller meeting there that I'd like, I'd like for you to be at as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Letty, we didn't have any other?
That's all.
That's all? Okay. Number four, financial monthly report. Mr. Kissinger?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to forego the financial monthly report because it'll be part of the tentative budget.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we have presentations. A, presentation of audit FY 2020-2021.
Mr. Mayor, I handed out the audit to all the members of the mayor and council, and we have Mr. O'Satch on the screen here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kissinger. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for having me today, allowing me to present remotely here. So the reports that I'm going to present today that you have in front of you, there's five items included in that package that you should have been provided. The governance communication, which is essentially, I'll walk through that, that document. But it's essentially what I'm doing here today is just presenting the audit results, our responsibility, as well as the city's responsibility, and then any required communication that we have. The annual financial report, which is included in the packet. The single audit report, which is, two reports included in there, one of them of which we report on the federal awards that were spent during the fiscal year. And then the two other reports that are included is the highway user revenue report and the annual expenditure limitation report, and I'll go over each one of those. So just to give you an idea of what this year's audit, this is the June 30th, 2020 audit looked like. The audit was done remotely. We had two weeks of preliminary work that were done in May and June. And then our final field work was largely completed in September of 2020. But due to the other post-employment benefit actuarial report not being completed at that time, we didn't wrap up until April of 2020, and I'm here presenting those reports today. So let me go through the communications that we have and the reports that we have. So the first one is the governance communication. So a couple of things I wanted to highlight that's in that communication is some of the significant estimates that go into preparing the financial statements. Some of those estimates are related to depreciation, the fair value of investments, allow it, the allowance for uncollectibles, and then for the OPEB and pension and compensated abscences, those are also estimates. And then the claims incurred but not reported yet. And the reason these are important is because these are estimates going into the financial statements based on historical data, but we do want to make readers aware that these are estimates and are subject to change. These are based on either reports from actuaries or from, you know, basically going to market to look at what the fair values of these investments are that are being reported. We did communicate in that letter that the, there was an audit, a delay in the issuance of the audit. And as I previously mentioned, that was due to the other post-employment benefits. Had the actuarial complete that. And then we had a little bit of back and forth with the actuary once that report was finally finished. And then from, really from our end, once the actuarial was completed, there are other auditors that actually audit the housing authority. So they needed to complete, or needed to have the OPEB actuarial report in order for them to complete their audit. And we subsequently had to wait for the housing audit to be completed because the housing authority is included in the financial statements for the city. So we can't do that until that audit is completed as well. So you'll notice in there that we did have some material audit adjustments related to the financial statements. They were related to adjustments for that OPEB liability, some of the trustee activity related to the debt that the city has, as well as a fair market value adjustment that was made. And then we also had three uncorrected misstatements. And what, what that means is that they all reflect, it is reflected in the financial statements, but there were some immaterial capital assets that were not capitalized in the previous fiscal year, so they will capitalize in the current fiscal year without making an adjustment to beginning net position at all. The annual financial report, I'll throw a little bit more detail on that, but we did issue an unmodifier for a clean opinion. The single audit report, I'll also spend a little bit more time on, but in the message there's two reports that are included. One is the government audit and standards report. And we do not give an opinion, but rather we report on internal controls over the financial statements. So that means that if we had any deficiencies in internal controls that we felt were important enough to gain the attention of the council, those are included in there. And we did have one material weakness for some material audit adjustments we had related to the audit. And then the second report in there is the uniform grant guidance. This one, we do give an opinion on compliance with your major federal programs with federal guidelines. And then we just report on internal controls. So if we had any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would report those in that report. But I'm glad to say that we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. The highway user revenue examination report, we issued a clean opinion on that. What we're looking at is we're looking at the use of highway user revenue funds for compliance with Arizona revised statutes. So what we do in order to give an opinion is we select a sample of the county's payable disbursements, payroll and payroll-related disbursements, as well as any transfers in or out of that fund, determine that those funds were used in accordance with state statute, and we were able to give a, provide a clean opinion on that. The annual expenditure limitation report, all cities and towns in Arizona are subject to an expenditure limit, whether that is a voter-approved limit or that is an amount that is authorized by the EOC. We did issue a clean opinion on that as well. Generally, what we're looking for related to that is the reporting is in accordance with the annual expenditure reporting requirements provided by the state. And we also look at any additions, subtractions, deductions, or exclusions that are claimed within the annual expenditure limitation report. Because essentially, that report is a reconciliation from the financial statements to the, the annual expenditure amounts that are subject to the expenditure limitation amount. So there are certain amounts that are excluded or can be deducted, or on the other hand, need to be added back. But we were able to provide a clean opinion on that. So let me run through just the annual financial report. As I mentioned, we issued a clean opinion. We performed an audit of the basic financial statements that are in there. And then the required supplementary information, so that would be the management discussion and analysis. And then there's also some required supplementary, supplementary information related to the pension and other post-employment benefits. Those we do not give an opinion on, but we do look at that information for consistency within the basic financial statements themselves. In performing the audit for the financial statements, we really do it on a risk-based approach. And so the areas that we identified as higher risk were management override of controls, revenue recognition, the financial close process, and capital assets, specifically completeness of capital assets. So when I say that there's, we identified as a high risk, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's anything going wrong, but every organization just has higher-risk areas. It would be unusual for us to not identify any high-risk areas. But these were the areas that we identified as potentially being high-risk where a misstatement could occur. And so the purpose in doing that is we design our procedures and to do additional procedures related to some of those higher-risk areas, which doesn't mean that we don't look at any of the other significant areas, but we, you know, may do more basic procedures on some of the other areas that we look at as part of the audit. Couple of highlights I just wanted to note in the financial statements. The first one is, is that during the 2020 year, there was an increase of about 2.7 million in the general fund fund balance. So don't get too excited. There's a couple of reasons for that, and there's one big reason for that. Couple of good things is there were some increases in revenue over the prior year related to taxes, as well as some of the state shared revenues, which just really says that in 2020, even with everything that was going on with the pandemic, that the, the city of Nogales still had, was collecting a good share of some of that state, state shared revenues as well, as well as sales tax. But what really accounted for a big portion of that increase in the general fund was about 1.9 million of expenditures related to public safety that were actually funded by the coronavirus relief funds, and that, that, those expenditures were actually moved and recorded in a separate grants fund. So that accounted for the most significant increase within the general fund. A couple of other items just to note, the Arizona state retirement system, the pension liability increased over the prior year by about half a million. The police public safety pension increased by about a million and a half, and the fire of public safety increased slightly about 0.2 million. But you did see a decrease in your single employer's other post-employment benefit plan of about 3.3 million dollars. And then just a couple of things to note for upcoming for June 30th, 2021. Subsequent to June 30th, 2020, there was about 10.6 million and 4.3 million of water infrastructure finance authority notes that were authorized for use related to the water and sewer. So the last report I just want to give a little bit more detail on is the single audit report. So in the single audits, we look at major federal programs. Were required for the city of Nogales to pass at least forty percent of all federal expenditures? We looked at two programs. We looked at the community development grant, which is 1.5 million, and we looked at the coronavirus relief fund, which was approximately 2.3 million. So those were the two programs that we looked at. That accounted for almost 4.7 million in federal, I'm sorry, that accounted for a little over, well, almost four million, but there was about 4.6 million total expenditures. So we actually looked at about eighty-three percent of your total federal expenditures. And I'm happy to say that we were able to issue a clean opinion on the uniform grant guidance report, which means that you were in compliance with the use of those federal dollars. And we didn't know any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over compliance related to those federal programs. So that is about as brief as I could get, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that any of the council members might have.
Anybody have any questions? No? Okay, John, room three.
Dennis, the mayor indicated there's no, no questions for you, so I appreciate you taking the time to go over the, the audit with us.
Absolutely. And real quickly, I just want to just give a thanks to Pat Walker and to John Kissinger. They were intimately involved in performing the audit, so I just appreciate their assistance during the audit process as well. So thanks for having me today.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, B, proclamation, Flag Day, I'll be reading that. Whereas by act of Congress of the United States dated June 14th, 1777, the first official flag of the United States was adopted. And whereas by, by act of Congress dated August 3rd, 1949, June 14th of each year was designated National Flag Day. And whereas the Congress has requested the president to issue annually a proclamation designating the week in which June 14th occurs as National Flag Week. And whereas by act of Congress dated June 20th, 1985, Public Law 19-54 was passed to have the pause for the Pledge of Allegiance as part of the celebration of National Flag Day throughout the nation. And whereas Flag Day celebrates our nation's symbol of unity and democracy in the, in a republic and stands for our country's devotion to freedom and to the rule of all and to equal rights for all. Now therefore, I, Arturo Garino, Mayor of the City of Nogales, Arizona, do hereby urge all citizens of the city of Nogales to urge June 14th, 2021 as Flag Day. Thank you very much. C, proclamation, United States Army 246th Birthday. Councilman Diaz, please, would you read the proclamation?
Okay. Proclamation. Whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress, representing the citizens of thirteen American colonies, authorized the establishment of the Continental Army. And whereas the collective expression of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused the authorization and organization of the United States Army led to the adaptation of the Declaration of Independence and the codification of the new nation's basic principles and values in the, in the Constitution. And whereas for the past 246 years, the U.S. Army's central mission has been to fight and win the nation's wars. And whereas the motto of duty, honor, country is the creed by which the American soldier lives and serves. And whereas no matter what the cost, location, or magnitude of future conflicts, the nation can rely on the U.S. Army to produce well-trained, well-led, highly motivated soldiers to carry out the missions entrusted to them. And whereas the components of the U.S. Army, to include the Arizona Army National Guard, the U.S. Army Reserves, and the regular army have contributed immensely to COVID-19 response. Whereas the members of the city of Nogales have proudly served and made ultimate, the ultimate sacrifice for our nation's freedom while serving in the United States Army and any other branches of our nation's military. Now therefore, I, Arturo Argarino, Mayor of the City of Nogales, Arizona, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2021 to be the United States Army's 246th Birthday. And express appreciation on behalf of the people of the city of Nogales to the United States Army and to the dedicated soldiers who have served in it over the 246 years it has been in existence.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Number six, discussion items. A, discussion, direction, and possible action, Greater Nogales, Santa Cruz County Port Authority and Nogales, Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce funding. Ms. Montiel?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and good evening to everyone here tonight. I put this on the agenda because I think you know that I'm very passionate about the collaboration that the city has to have with the stakeholders here in Nogales. It's imperative that we work closely together with our local stakeholders. And Jaime Chamberlain spoke a little while ago about the value of the Port Authority, and I want to add the value of the Chamber of Commerce here in Santa Cruz County. It's important to collaborate with not only these two stakeholders, but as many, if not all stakeholders here in Nogales. We need to get this economic machine, if you will, going. And we get voted in these positions to make sure and ensure that we get this, like I like to say, economic machine going as quickly and boldly. I value all stakeholders. I value the Chamber of Commerce. I think they have a lot to offer. I think we can sit down and talk about the, the things that they can do to bring in more tourism here in Santa Cruz, in Nogales and Santa Cruz County alike. And I think it's important that we, we vote and we fund the $50,000 respectively to each stakeholder. I know that we did at one time, and I hope that we decide to continue to fund these two entities. And I think that Mr. Chamberlain spoke very eloquently about the activities that have been going on. And we had the auditor speak a little bit about the tax revenue that came in with the SR 189 project. Like Jaime likes to say and remind me, it was a godsend during some very difficult times, and it's reflected across the budget. So I, again, support the collaboration with these two entities, the Port Authority and the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we continue with discussion, let's, let's make a motion on this first to, before we continue with discussions. So do I have a motion to continue with this, with a discussion, second discussion?
Second.
Second? Did you get that, Letty? Okay. And so discussion, do I have anybody else to have us in the discussion? Mr. Bonilla?
I understand that we must partnership with other entities here in the city of Nogales. However, we are, we're in the middle of finishing our, our budget. And also, at $50,000, Chamber of Commerce, Port Authority, I think that what can be done with these type of funds? We can hire two street employees, can pave two roads, like Mariposa Ranch Road, each one will cost $49,000. Purchase one fully-equipped ambulance, hire a new police officer, purchase a new police vehicle at $70,000, beef up parks and rec, do some sidewalks. I'd rather put these funds to better use, I believe, in investing in our city's infrastructure and, and reinvesting in our own employees. This is not the time to be handing out money to nonprofit organizations. We are in the middle of completing next year's budget. I do however wish to, at one point, invite back Mr. Chamberlain and Mrs. Kramer, and if they would like to give us a report for the city council and mayor, see what they have done with the past donations that the city has given, given them. And then I think the discussion could change. But for now, I, I call for the question.
Call for the question. Mr. Mayor?
Well?
Before you call to, I have, can I make a comment?
I'm going to give him a, go ahead, but he called for the question. Go ahead, Mr. Bonilla.
Okay. I do support the Port Authority, and even though I haven't worked with the Chamber of Commerce, I still, you know, our economy has been in shambles for the longest time. We haven't been able to do anything as far as the city level for economic development. In, in the last couple of years, I attended some of the conventions in, in the state, and, and the Port Authority was sponsoring some of the events there, and they did a great job representing Nogales and the county and the state. They have a, a great presence in the state of Arizona and in the federal level also. And we need, you know, right now, when we were struggling with the economy, I remember one time when I, when I, I was saying that I went to California and I went through the Calexico Board of, Port of Entry, and it, there was like a three-mile-long line, and it took me like 20 minutes. And I asked, you know, why, why does it take like 20 minutes for three miles to cross the border? And you know, that is, you know, there's only like 10 or 12 cars in front of you and it takes you a whole hour to cross. And what they said, you know, they said, well, you know, we have a good lobbyist in Washington, and California, you know, they pay for their service, and so does Texas, and that's why you get the good service. So, you know, I haven't talked to the Chamber of Commerce, but I'm pretty sure if we sit down with them and give them an opportunity to discuss what kind of plan they have and how they can help the city of Nogales, that would be a good idea. That's my comment.
Were you going to say something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because that's going to be the last one, because when it's called for the question, it's called for the questions. I'll let you talk.
And, and in respect, Mr. Bonillas, you know, please give us an opportunity to talk, and it's, that's what we're here for, you know, to all, all make our, our own comments. You know, I myself support both these organizations. We've worked with them. The chamber does a report, and, you know, it's up to them turning in their reports to get their, their support from the city. The city, you know, what the protest association and, and them do for the city is, there's no words. There's no words. It's a protest town. It's a protest town, we live, we live and die with protests. You know, what they bring into the city and what, what they've done to help in the infrastructure, to help in the, in the community, the support that they give to the community, you know, I get it in Little League, I see soccer gets it, everybody gets it. You know, so I really support this, these two organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonilla. So since I already gave them an opportunity, do you, do you have anything to say? No? Do you have anything?
We're, we're right in our middle of our budget and all that could, could this be tabled for a later date so we can discuss it, so we can discuss it with our attorney?
It could be brought back on a later day, but I don't recommend we table anything, not with the budget. So, so before we decide to vote on this, I have certain things that I still have concern of with the budget, and that's the employees. And I've told all of you how I feel about the employees. Some of them are going to get to a certain level, some of them are not. All right? And I know there's going to be an opportunity for them to get another little 2% down the road, but we still got to get our employees to a certain level. And while I think right now it's, it's cost of, I don't know, $700,000 total or something like that. I myself, yes, maybe later on, and I'll tell you this, the members of the Port Authority and the members of the chamber, later on, I might agree to make a decision on something like this, but I feel the same way right now. That right now, I think, I think this is shouldn't have been brought up right now until we pass our budget and get the city back on track, and then we can come back with that. There's nothing that says that we cannot amend the budget to assist the funding for these organizations. Nothing says that we cannot do that. We can do it. But I think we need to show first, our employees, the residents of Nogales... But I think we need to show first, our employees, the residents of Nogales, that we complete a budget and that our budget is sound, not only for the residents, but for the employees of the city of Nogales. And we haven't even dealt with that yet. Because not all the employees are gonna get the money. Remember what we talked during the budget hearings? None of them are gonna get the money. They're gonna come back and they're gonna say, why not me? So I think we need to do that. All right? And with that, I call for the question. And Letty will just do a rule call vote. Start with me, Letty.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Discussion item B, discussion, direction and possible action extending the use of recreational baseball fields to September. Councilman Magdalena.
Thank you. Well, we've had a very good, very good turnout with our baseball program and all that. And basically, all, you know, a lot of requests from parents on loving being, the kids are out and everything. I've been talking with Parks and Rec and, you know, there's other functions that wanna start, you know, the Mince Softball League and stuff like that. So we're willing to work with them and around them. I've got, the Fletcher Field basically is finishing on the 25th of June with the regular season. Little League Park is finishing on the 18th. And Memorial is finishing on the 25th. However, we have All-Stars coming right after the regular season. And obviously, we use the three parks to practice for the All-Stars preparations and all that. And we've got programmed of district tournaments coming into town. We've got, at Fletcher Field, we got two teams coming for the, for the district tournament on July 8th. And then we got six teams coming for the state tournament that we're gonna host. That's six teams from the whole state. The first district is from the, our west, excuse me, south, southeastern area of Arizona. And then, you know, but the state tournament's gonna be six teams throughout Arizona. So basically, in June, in June, at Little League Park, I've got three teams coming in to play the district tournament. And that's only district. And at Memorial, I've got, in July 13th, I've got the district tournament, which is also three teams. Then on the 23rd, I've got the state tournament coming in, which is 10 teams. Basically, you know, July is gonna be a busy baseball month. And, but that's why we give a break to all divisions, you know, because of the tournaments and all that. But I've been asked very hard from, from the parents and all that, you know, to come back and re, continue the league and everything. And I told them we would if council lets us keep using the parks and all that. But not till, basically, late August, early September, once they're back in school and settled. Obviously, Fletcher's been, you know, been requested to give time for the adults and all that. It'll be only a game on each park early at 5 o'clock. By 6, 6:30 will be done. Little League is only used by Little League. So we could continue there, you know, 5 and 7 o'clock games like normal. And Memorial, you know, basically, you know, it all, it all depends on, on the high school. They have their programs, the veteranos. And we've been collaborating and working together. Just, you know, my famous word is ham and egg and making it works. But basically, I would like to have the council and I would like your support on bringing back Little League baseball the end of August, early September. Through, basically, it's only gonna be through mid-October because I know Parks and Rec reseeds parks and I'm always willing to work with them. And that'll be the length of our season. When they start reseeding, we're out. But it's just to keep on, to keep the kids playing and enjoying the outdoors. So Mayor, I would like to move, you know, the council approves us continuing to use with good and collaboration with the city.
Till October or September?
Mid-October.
Mid-October.
Mid-October. That's when I know Parks and Rec starts reseeding. When they give me, tell me, October 13th, October 18th, October whatever, we're out.
Right, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
I see the mark in my God. First you said it was gonna be not that nanny.
Well, that's where we're at. That's where we're at. And fortunately, you know, everybody's out, you know. Matter of fact, I was, I was telling Greg Lucetta right now, today, I get, I got two calls of five and seven year olds wanting to play. And, you know, fortunately, I told him, you know, we're two weeks from finishing. Call me back in, in late Oc, late August and see, we'll see if there's any space. Because I know other sports, you know, soccer and other sports start and all that. Some kids will wanna do other sports. But I think, you know, we've had, I think we have at least 40%, at least 40% of first time players. First time players that had never played.
What you need is a parking lot. Yeah, because I went by there the other day, there was no room in the parking lot.
Yeah.
It's good, it's good to do in there.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, seven. Okay, A, consideration possible action of order 2021-06-027. Finance, go ahead, okay, second. All right, do I have a second? Yeah, all right. Okay, Finance and City Attorney, this is all yours.
Mr. Mayor, this is the tentative, time for the passing of the tentative budget.
Yes, I understand. I just don't wanna read that whole thing.
You don't have to read the whole thing, Mr. Mayor. You know what it says. So we have Ms. Walker on the, on the, on the screen here that we can go over the tentative budget and the changes that we made in our, in our budget hearings to go over them and present them to you what's gonna be in the tentative budget. And she will take it from here. She's on the screen here, and I also, Pat, have your presentation on the other screen. So it's all, you got the floor there, Pat.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. So you can see my slide presentation now, I'm sharing it?
Yes.
Right. Okay, Mayor and Councilors, as John said, this is the step in the process when we look at the tentative budget. And with the tentative budget, if you approve this at the beginning, we're setting a ceiling in the budget. That doesn't mean that you can't bring it down or change things within the budget between now and the final budget adoption, which is different for June 28th. But it will set a ceiling, so a number that you can't raise the budget after the beginning, after you adopt it, but you can lower it. And of course, during the years, I heard council members stress, you can change things around. It's not as though it's, council has the authority to do that. So I'm first beginning an overview of the fiscal 2022 proposed budget. And I'm gonna do an overview of the general fund revenues and expenditures. We're gonna talk about the American Rescue Plan Act funds. It was a Berchtesgaden relief act, but now they call it the American Rescue Plan Act. We'll discuss general fund balances. We'll talk about the council decisions that were made in the last workshop. Any answers to that, the next steps, and then any questions or wrap up from there. What I'd like to go over first is what the total budget is for the city of Nogales for fiscal year 2122. As you can see, the 2021 budget was $69,005,803. The proposed budget for 2122 is $82,772. And I'd like to go over a few reasons for that, on that. The first is general fund. As you can see, that did go up. But as Dennis had mentioned, and as what we're gonna receive in American Relief Fund, that frees up general fund money. And because of that fact, we were able to cover expenditure, general fund money is carried forward, and we can use it for other purposes then. The other large increase was this money is funding, which is just your, your contingency that you have. You've got your contingency reserve there, you've got $2,000 for the Chase Bank, and the $500,000 for the general fund compensation study. And we always put in some miscellaneous funding in the event that a grant comes in or something else comes in and we need to be able to move funding around to accept that money. If you don't, under Arizona state statutes, put an appropriation in, you can't spend it. The other large increase you'll see is the street funds that you're heard. And the reason that that went up is because if you don't carry forward the funds, you can't spend it. And this year, we instituted a process where we estimate revenues and estimated expenditures so that we can get a firm handle on the amount of revenue of the carry forward funds that you have. And because it just sits there, then it keeps building if you don't appropriate it. So we appropriated everything we thought you're gonna take in as far as revenue fund balances for fiscal year 21. And then if it wasn't spent, then 2121, it got carried forward in 2122. So it looks like an increase, but a lot of that is just carry forward money. The other one that was a large increase is the health insurance. And this one is where you, this is the claim activity. And you have revenues come in and expenditures go out. And it had been budgeted a few years ago, and then for some reason it's stopped being budgeted in the last two fiscal years. I feel that it needs to be in the budget as an expenditure because it's built on your financial statements as an expenditure. And the statutes require that you have an appropriation for all expenditures. Overall, you will find in the prior years, because you have appropriation, it didn't mean especially about miscellaneous funding. But again, for transparency and to make sure that we are following state statutes, we have put it in there this year. The public works utilities, that's showing $448,000 increase. It's not really an increase. In prior fiscal years, you would take a negative to your, your expense account. It would zero out. And I think, again, for transparency purposes, we need to show revenues as revenue and expenses as expenses. But we brought that money into the utilities to fund the public works administration for water, sewer and sanitation. And we show the expense we appropriated for it. And again, community is poverty that was moved into the water fund. And we, for no, we cut out that, we discussed during the group of the workshop. For the general fund as a recap, the fiscal year 2021 revenues were $21.8 million. The budget was $21.18 million for 21, and the estimate is $21.6 million. So the fiscal year 22 proposed budget is $22 million. And the carry forward funds is $36,299,500. And Dennis just talked about with the HOBIT, we did receive $2,307,958. Some of it was booked past 20 because the expenditures were made in 20 and so created a general fund. And so again, that's going down, carried forward into 21. We're projected to receive $2,398,439 for fiscal year 22. And we're gonna place it in Fund 55, which is that miscellaneous grant funding. We cannot use that money to reduce taxes and not use to pay down unfunded liability for PSPRS. However, we were projected to receive $2,398,439. And we got an update last week that you will now be receiving $3,357,02 or an increase of $908,568 for the next 10 years. And that's only to do this, but I want to remind council this one time. There are limitations on what you use it on. And what we're planning to use it on is the police contribution and fire. Even though, I attended a webinar on Friday regarding this, given by the governor's office in the Arizona League, of what you couldn't, could use. And I specifically asked if we could use it for the annual police and fire retirement payment, the employer board. And they said, yes, you could. They're still looking at all the details of the app, pages and pages. We're gonna keep up on this, but hopefully get this distributed to everybody in June. And this will free up general fund revenues then. The capital, which is the general fund budget included in budget is $3,833,866. I'm not gonna go into every one of these. These were briefed during the budget workshop. And the budget document you have in front of you has this time each department. We did list that. The library replaced one of the B library, the Freedom Chapel Cemetery. Here's some vehicles, a wireless unit for City Hall and Public Works. Replaced the fuel tank and fleet for police intercepting facilities. And there's a bunch of park improvements into the vehicles, as well as facility and building improvements, was replacing AC units, upgrades, city hall annex, as well as some vehicles that they also need and monitoring equipment at Public Works. The fire department has fire attendants for hydrant gaps, monitors. They have a train tower repair, ambulances. And then, as far as physicians, so what did we include this year? Well, there were frozen physicians that were budgeted in prior years that just were frozen and weren't filled. So we were able to unfreeze four police officer physicians, one communication officer physician, and one lieutenant physician, and one corporal physician. There were three new police officers and physicians added to be paid for the grant for the first three years that constantly had a grant that we've been in the budget. Other physicians that were either unfrozen or new, we unfroze the economic development analyst in the city manager's office. We unfroze the senior engineer technician, unfroze the library assistant. We did add a new physician for fire inspector, public educator. However, this will be part time, $19 hours a week. The Parks Department, we added a new physician for groundskeeper. And in the cemetery, we added two groundskeepers. The one thing that council asked us to do was go back and look at the difference between leasing versus purchasing. And we are able to purchase versus leasing and save $55,552 by going in that direction. One of the things I mentioned is the contingency reserve. And what we put aside this year is the equivalent of approximately three months of operating expenditure. This is probably under council's approval. This cannot be used unless council does approve it. And so this is placed in the non-departmental contingency reserve. On top of that, we have the Chase Bank improvements of $2,000,000 replaced in the budget. And then a compensation study in the general fund for $500,000. One of the things that we wanted to go over is to kinda show you where we're getting that $500,000 from. And again, that's a round number because by the time we implement this, there'll be position changes, you know, a vacancy might occur, somebody might be in a different position. So we just got an estimate, plus work is not likely to up a little bit too, depending on the salary increase from that. But we did consider what would do to retirement and fight that in Medicare. And with those costs, it would cost the general fund $463,931 to bring up 129 employees to the minimum. There's 283 in all of the boys that you have. And this will bring up 129 to the minimum of the range that is adopted by council. The cost for, the other funds such as her, cud, lead, public works, sanitation, water, wastewater is $282,133. Again, that's with the EREs. As I mentioned, 129 out of 283 of the boys that we brought up. But let's talk about the bottom line for the general fund. Does all these numbers change? Because as you, if you know, we went back and we added in physicians and we recalculated benefits and we added in some things that came out during the budget workshop. So at the end of the day, this is where it does sell. It didn't change, but we worked for 630,20. Your ending fund balance for general fund is $15,664,953, which then becomes a beginning fund balance for fiscal year 21, which begins July 1 of 21 and goes through June 30 of 22. That's what we call it, 2122 fiscal year. And we're estimating to receive $2,997,803. I'm pointing this out because before, if you didn't estimate your revenues and your expenditures, it was kinda hard to tell how much money you're gonna bring forward. We've got that in place now. So we're bringing that forward in the ending fund balance. So the total unestimated fund balance for fiscal year 22 is $18,652,746. So the total unestimated fund balance for fiscal year 22 is $18,652,746. The balance that we're using in order to pay for all those things that I just went over on the capital is $10,348,465, still leaving a balance of $8,314,281, not appropriated anywhere. In addition to that, if you don't spend your contingency reserve, you have an initial $6,275,262, so you have a total fund balance of about $14,589,543, a general fund fund balance. So a lot of this is a result of the CARES money and the relief money freeing up general fund money. It's not really going to be ongoing, and that's why you, you was by the council, had to compliment me, you put a lot of things at the one time things this year with the capital. So one of the things that we received, council and who, that we saw, and we're ready to turn it over to the dearest, that there was only 283 employees that were going to use any type of increase from fiscal year 22. So we went back and we looked at, what if we brought up those employees that are below the midpoint? Because you have your minimum, your midpoint, and your max range. And we said, what if we just took 2% to bring those people up to a little bit closer maybe to the midpoint? And that would cost an additional, in the general fund, $134,755,06. If council were to choose to do that this evening, this will be part of the adoption of tentative budget. We don't need to change the total amount, it will just reduce down the contingency. In the event, this is what it costs to be bought. Other funds, $23,189, so the total cost to do this additional 2% for employees to move them up closer in the range is $157,944. This will then allow 257 of the 283 employees to receive an increase. The latter 26 employees, they're already over midpoint, they might be closer to the max range. And then what the staff will do is go back and look at an implementation, how you can move people to ranges in the future, and we'll be bringing that back to council. Is there any questions on this before I move on?
No.
Okay. So, moving decisions that were made, you went through each of the positions, we presented the ones proposed, and we presented the ones that were requested, and all of the positions were unfrozen, and a set of new positions were added in the general fund. And then we asked if we could move ahead with the compensation study, and we included the $500,000 in the contingency reserve, the general fund. Once the budget's approved, we're going to then distribute that to all the departments with the positions, and make sure that the salaries are hidden in that, and lower that $500,000 to the reserve right now. And then again, other funds will come out, there are specific contingency reserve funds. We also asked if you wanted to lease versus pay, and you want us to look into that, and so we're going to stay $55,000, as I mentioned on the other slide. The other thing is, we talked about was credit card fees, maybe that's something in the future that we can have thought, and save about $114,000 a year to the city. And so that's something that staff will be bringing back in the future here. So the next steps in the budget process is tonight, June 9, tentative budget adoption. And also that with the tentative budget adoption, you will be setting the public hearing for Monday, June 28, 2023, 10:00. And after that, move the public hearing, and you will be asked to run a final budget. The battle, turn it over to council, do you have any questions?
Mr. Garino. Earlier today, I was, I talked to Mr. Kissinger about the dues we pay for the membership for the Port Authority and the Chamber. And I understand the dues for the Port Authority are on the budget, but the dues for the Chamber are not. And I couldn't get the answer on, besides the past, the past two, two or three years that they haven't received that. And I think, I think we need to give the Chamber their dues. And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, in the past, it's been $6,500 annually for the Chamber of Commerce, and the Port Authority, I think it was $2,000. So if, if we can add that to the budget, please, so that they can get, they can receive their dues as membership.
Okay. So that would be $8,500 that would come off your contingency reserve then?
Yes.
Okay. And Mayor, council, we'd like some direction on what enough to go forward with the additional 2% on salaries, if we can have a discussion about that?
I, I say yes, myself. That, John, you said that that was on top of the ones that were going to be brought up to mid, is that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, there's, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was 128 employees that are below minimum.
Okay.
With that $500,000, and I'm just talking general fund right now, we'll bring all of those employees up to the minimum of the salary study that we did. In addition, we're proposing, or to Mayor and council, to take the people who are between mid, minimum and midpoint, and give each one of them 2% on top of their current salary, thus bringing them closer to market study, which is midpoint.
Yes.
The goal is to bring all of our employees up to midpoint, to be within market study. We know that that's not easy to do in one year. And so we are asking and proposing that you approve the 2% for all the 129 more employees to bring them up 2% between, between minimum and midpoint.
Yes. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Pat, did you, this is Councilman Maldonado. You mentioned right now with the, with the 2%, 257 would be over the mid.
Yeah, council member, they would still, there are some that may be over the mid, but when bringing up to 257, as John said, there's 129, and then another 128. And they would bring them up 2% between the minimum and the mid. Doesn't mean that all those people are going to be drive over the mid.
Okay, sorry, that's what I had understood.
Councilman Horst.
Mr. Kissinger, if I understand correct, are these, these 2% will be applied to the employees before we do the compensation study?
So what the proposal is, is the 128 employees currently, or positions within the city, right, that are below the minimum, will be brought up to the minimum, that's the $500,000.
But that's before the compensation study, right?
I understand the question, before the compensation study. That is, that's what the compensation study is.
That was part of it.
That's part of the compensation?
Yes.
Okay, that was.
It'll bring them to the minimum of the compensation study.
129, she's got.
129.
The 2%, the 2% is for the rest to get to a certain level?
Right. Get them closer to midpoint.
How many are not going to get anything?
129, Mr.
No, but.
Total?
Yeah, they're not receiving anything.
257 total employees will see an increase of something in their paycheck, and I believe the, the rest are 26 employees, if I do the math right.
Those are already there.
They're already past midpoint.
Midpoint.
John, you're pasou.
They're already getting paid more than market study.
Okay, good. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Yes. Pat, I think we're okay with that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but we're going to need a vote on the.
Yes, yes, I understand.
There's a motion in the sector.
Yes, there's a motion, okay. I want to real call vote on this, Letty, please.
I actually have a question before the board, since we, I don't think we get a vote on the compensation study, but, so is that still there? Do we need to have an express element within this motion, Pat, to go forward with the compensation study and the 2%? Or is that clear that that motion now includes that?
Your mic.
Can I ask me that, Michael?
Yes, I'm kind of asking you.
Do you want to vote on the 2%?
Because I, I don't see the language in the written order that directs staff to go forward with the compensation study, or that 2%. So do we, do you have your direction there, that we'll start that as of July 1, or do we need to put that into the?
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't think it would hurt for us to take a vote, either that or amend the, the.
The tentative?
The motion to include the 2% in the tentative budget.
But isn't that part of the tentative? It's part, it's within the contingency.
It's within the contingency of it.
Okay. And we'll have a vote on the final anyways. Yeah, because I'm saying. We're all clear. No, because I'm saying, we're still talking about the budget. Right. All right? So, okay. All right, so this is part of the budget. Right. So why do we need two votes? I don't know. No, 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 just to amend it, to make sure that the, the money that's in the contingency to fund the compensation study will be part of the budget as.
Salaries, basically.
Okay. No. That, as the final budget, when the final budget comes back.
We can take direction like we heard, or if you want to take an official vote, Mayor, it's, you're, I defer to you guys, what you want to do.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Maybe I'm just confusing things, Mayor. Okay. I think it's clear enough, then, we'll go forward, and they'll be, it'll probably be pulled out by the final budget.
Well, Ms. Mayor.
Because she's going to bring back by the 28th, what we have, is that my?
We'll bring back the final budget, Mr. Mayor, that includes the compensation study to bring 128 employees up to a minimum, and the 2% that brings the other 29, 2% more.
Right.
And we're not hearing anything different from Mayor and council.
I won't be here on the 28th. Why not? Mayor, I've got, my annual conference is on the 28th. No, no, you got. So we have to straighten this all out, right here, right now.
Mr. Mayor, it'll probably go smooth.
No, 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 let's, no, well, let's, let's do it as is right now. Real call vote, Letty, please. Start with me.
Mayor, ready, ma'am?
Yes, aye.
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 Mrs. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Muniya?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for the vote, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the work.
The finance team, Gene, Pat, and everybody that working back there, worked tirelessly to get this thing done. It's not an easy, it's not an easy document to put together.
And we were going to have the special meeting on the 27th, which I think was a Sunday.
Right. So Mike, so Mike can be here.
So that Mike can be here. If it's before 12.
Mr. Mayor. Pat, thank you, thank you a lot.
Pat's still on the line, just had a little question on.
Pat, are you still on the line?
On the leasing and.
Yes, yes.
Just a question on the leasing and other vehicles. You know, we saved $55,552. Obviously, the, the purchase is a one-time payment. What was the leasing terms? Four years, five years, or?
Five, five years.
Do you know how much interest or we would have been paying on those five years?
Yes, you pay the sales tax around 8% and you get an interest of about 0.2 something, it was on one of my slides that I have. It wasn't very much interest, but by a few legitimate years, it made a difference. And again, I don't know what they, they gave off the vehicles.
The savings of the, of the 55 is including that, that extra cost?
Yes, I compare what it would cost to lease the most vehicles versus what it cost to purchase it, and the difference was going to be $5,000.
Okay. Just thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Pat.
So before the mayor goes on to the next item, Pat, is there anything that you wanted to add to the tentative budget?
Well, Mayor members of the council, the only thing I wanted to add is that the document that you have before you has been really, and as you said, the finance team is just all out to put this in the letter. And it is much more easily readable, I think that we're going to see the included summary of every revenue in the city this time, where it had not been included by bond before. And so with that, I think that we're going to try to submit to the GF OA, the distinguished budget presentation board this year, we're going to work on the final bracket more and make sure we leave the criteria. But that would be a really kudo for the City of Nogales to get, and it really looks good, especially when you go out and are wanting to sell bonds, and you have one of those like S and P, they look at that when they look at reading the bonds for a lower interest rate. So I think it would be really good, and I think we've got a good opportunity with the teamwork on this budget. And I want to thank the Mayor and council too for your hard work, this has been a really good budget, and I think that the passion that goes into it and the care, the citizens are really going to get quality product on this next year.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, move on? Okay. B, consideration possible action of order 2021 dash 06 dash 028, an order of the council of the city in Nogales, Arizona, confirming the appointment of acting city manager.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. Messi.
Sir.
You know, I've been questioning this, again, with not having a permanent in-between, in-between Mr. Kissinger's temporary.
Yes.
And what is, what is basically the job description of the city deputy manager when we don't have a city manager?
That's a good question. The deputy city manager is designed to step in as needed when we don't have an acting city manager, but at the same time, we have other provisions, including charter provisions that the mayor is very well, the mayor can appoint people when an officer's position is vacant. So, so we do have ways of filling in the position, but I'm not exactly sure what.
Well, my, my point is, basically, you know, this appointing will increment our costs.
Right.
And if his duties are as acting, acting deputy city manager, to step in for the, when the city manager's not there, we don't have that cost.
So there is a charter provision that says the council will appoint an acting city manager when there's a vacancy. I think what I'm taking from this is that maybe you're suggesting that the council not appoint, and just kind of let the natural course of events go forward.
Of the duties of the, of the deputy city manager?
I, I would appreciate that if you had brought that to my attention before tonight, but my reaction to that approach is, that doesn't sound right to me at all. But without opportunity to prepare, you know, something more substantive and responsive to your suggestion, I think that's probably where I'll leave it for right now.
But what's the rush of having to appoint one today if that, if that is his duties?
Well, I think it's consistent with the city council, I mean, duties under the charter to appoint. So there is a charter provision that allows the mayor to appoint, but there's also a charter provision that allows the council to appoint. And so this is before the council, for the council to take action, on a more permanent basis.
But the council provision says there must be a permanent in-between before he comes back?
No, that language isn't in there. That was the response I gave to Councilman Verona when he was saying, hey, how should we be doing this? I said, that was the better approach, but it's not clearly required by the express wording of the charter. So this is something that I think is vested in the discretion of city council, to move forward with this.
We've always, we have already spent $35,000 in this company looking for a city manager, correct?
That was the decision of council to do that.
You know, what's the rush in spending another $30,000 in wages, and not, and just having the deputy city manager do his?
Well, this is giving the council the opportunity to act. And so I think whenever council is vested by the charter to act, and we put it in front of council to act, my advice would be for council to act.
Okay. No more questions?
All right.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Last, last month, you know, we, we had a special.
Last, last month, you know, we, uh, we had a special session, and we appointed Mr. Kissinger to the, to be the city manager, and, and I agreed to it. But, uh, I'm, I'm having a little bit of problem with this resolution, 'cause we never mentioned any, uh, salary increase. Is, is this a man-
What resolution?
The one-
This order.
It's an order.
The order, I'm sorry.
This is the exact same salary, I think, from the last time Mr. Kissinger was working as acting city manager. So, he requested after that, as, if you recall, that motion went forward, but there was no opportunity for Mr. Kissinger to be heard. He wasn't even, I don't think, even in the room at that time. And so, we're putting it before the council to, uh, put him in the, uh, position in the same terms that he was put in the last-
How, how much were we paying Mr. Thompson as acting city manager?
We don't have the exact-
I think it's-
Would you like me to answer, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
He's getting paid, uh, this, the mayor and council, uh, voted to pay him the same salary that I was getting paid as deputy city manager.
As a deputy.
As deputy. Yes, sir?
I think it's a hundred and eight.
104, I believe.
104.
It was acting city manager.
Yeah.
He's acting city manager.
He didn't get the salary then.
No, he got 104,000.
Something like that, yes.
So, now we're going above that, above that salary, 30,000 more?
Yes, we're, this, this salary is the exact same salary that Dr. Felix was getting, Mr. Mayor.
The salary, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That Dr. Felix was paid, when he was city manager. This isn't Johnson's salary, Johnson's salary was higher than this. So, this goes back to Dr. Felix's salary.
So, so, and the charter says that when, when the deputy city manager takes over the acting city manager, he, uh, he gets the salary of the, the manager that's leaving?
Uh, the, the charter doesn't set salary, so what this order does is it confirms last month's order, but it's also fleshed out with the precise terms. And the terms are those same terms that council approved about a year ago, or less, when Mr. Kissinger was put as acting city manager back then.
Okay, thank you. You okay? Yes.
Well, my, I'm gonna just, uh, my opinion, if he's gonna be at, uh, working as a city manager, he's supposed to get a city manager's salary, regardless. I mean, he, he could stay where he is, but we need him as city manager. He deserves a city manager's salary. She's like that, that's my view.
And actually, it's not the city manager's salary, 'cause like, so the city manager, according to the job description we have, is up, could be up to 150,000.
Oh, yeah.
But that's a city manager.
That's, it's subject to negotiation.
Yeah, subject to negotiation, yeah.
But, uh-
Yes, go ahead.
No comment. But on, on the, on the order, it, it doesn't say anything that he's gonna be getting additional duties or responsibilities. He's doing a great job as a, as a deputy city manager, and he's front of the city like a city manager. We're not adding any other duties, all we're doing is we're just changing the, the, the title of the position. So, so, you know, I, I was just having a, a problem, you know, just for a title change to be $30,000, it was quite a bit of money.
Okay.
But that's my opinion.
Yeah. Anybody else have any opinions? All right. Go ahead.
My opinion is that if you're a city manager, you have more responsibility than a deputy city manager. I, I think that, that should be, 'cause he, he has more responsibility, of course, he has to have more pay.
Mayor, if I could be heard-
Yes.
There's no question that as far as legality with all of the, uh, documents that a city manager has to execute, there's no question that an acting city manager, fully authorized by the city council, is in a much stronger position on any time that you need him to make a decision and sign documents than a deputy city manager who simply happens to be acting because that's, there's nobody else there. I mean, from a legal point of view, you need to have very, very clear, uh, documentation, who's in charge and who has that authority, and where does that authority come from? It comes from the city council.
But that's where my question is. What, what, what happens in the scenario, you're not, you don't have a city manager? What is the responsibility? What is the, the job description of the, of, of the deputy city manager?
Well, Mayor-
Yes, go ahead.
-I can be heard again, and I, I don't really want to be, um, oppositional to your council member-
No.
Or, or debating-
If we don't talk, we don't, you know, that's what we're here for. And I'm, and I'm not just, I'm just wanna make sure it's being done the right way.
Right, so, there is a council, I mean, a charter section that contemplates that city council will be able to appoint an acting city manager. And then a couple of sections after that, uh, and that council provision, or that charter provision that talks about council's authority to appoint an acting city manager, that was adopted in 2000, when, when the city went to the city manager, uh, council form of government. But then two sections after that, and was one of the original provisions of the Nogales Charter, says that should any appointed officer of the city tempor, be temporarily unable for any cause to perform his duties, the mayor may make a temporary appointment. So, it, it, so if council were not to act tonight to fill the position, my advice would be for the mayor then to act, and he can act at any time, he doesn't have to act at council meeting, but somebody should be at, acting to fill that position, so it's very clear who's in charge of the city.
But you're not answering my question. I asked you, what is the job description of the deputy city manager?
Oh, well, if you had asked me that before the council meeting, I would appreciate-
I got no hurry.
I would have brought that document with me.
I got no hurry.
But I don't have the, um-
You're, you're, you're-
Memory to have all of the job descriptions in my head.
You're, you're the man that, that gives us the legal advice.
And I would appreciate the opportunity to ask legal advice ahead of council meeting, so I'm not put on the spot like this.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Massey, um, I have a question, and, um, in the event that we don't find a city manager, 'cause it's, it's, you know, I know we hired a, a firm, um, and we haven't had the best of luck to, to find a, uh-
Your choice.
Best fit.
Yes.
Yes, well, no, uh, that's the truth. So, in the event that you, we can't, um, hire the right fit, whatever you want to call it, whatever language you want to use, um, what will happen?
Well, uh, the maximum appointment for acting city managers for six months.
Six months, so in the event-
And it started on June 3rd, as a result of last month's vote. So, this is confirming that, it's not really putting, he's already there.
I understand that, yeah.
And, uh, so as of, uh, if I did my math right, you know, December 2nd-
December 2nd.
He should be exiting his position. But it is month to month, so at any time, Mayor, on the council meeting, anybody can put on the agenda, you know, to reconsider and re-vote that. So, yeah, if, if the, uh, process that we're underway with selecting a permanent city manager is not complete by, uh, December 2nd, and I'm thinking it has, there's plenty of opportunity for it to be completed by then, then the question will come back to council to appoint another person acting city manager.
And, thank you, and the reason I ask that question is because it seems like that's the pattern, right? And, um, and so, I'm, I'm kind of forecasting, you know? And the other question I have is, who will, um, maybe, I'm out of order, and, but who will, uh, when is the time, or not necessarily who will, but when is the time to select or appoint a deputy acting city manager? Will that-
Well, I, I think that that appointment, Mayor-
Go ahead.
That was a, a position created by council-
Council.
And it's included in the budget, uh, for this year and for next year, and so the normal position, it's under the, uh, administration department, so usually department directors make those appointments to deputies under them. So, if there's a vacancy in deputy city manager position, then I think the acting city manager can fill that.
And the reason I ask that is because if we're not going to assign a acting deputy city manager, then Mr. Kissinger will be, um, doing additional duties as a city manager, and, which justifies the additional pay.
I, I don't think that's a legal question.
Well, it is, well, I, the reason I, let me ask you why, uh, yeah, let me ask you why it might be a legal question, is because there's no, um, future misuse of funds or any of that sort of thing when we're paying this additional monies, um, that are being questioned, right?
I don't see-
Oh, okay.
It's in the budget.
Yeah. 'Cause it-
It's, it's-
Exactly. No, I saw it, I saw it, I just want to go on record, uh, because it, I don't want it to come back. I, I feel that Mr. Um, Mr. Um, Kissinger does it like Mr. Mahorca said, he, and all of you here, does a great job. I know that firsthand, I was new to this, uh, to this position, if you want to call it, um, and he's the first to answer my questions. He, uh, is always very, um, approachable, all the time, um, either it be the budget or either it be simple questions, or reaching out to him after constituents' call about an issue out in the, in the public. So, I, I want to, um, you know, address that, um, that I, that I'm very appreciative. I think he does a great, uh, job, but the question, I think, is, uh, still remains, is I just want to make sure that we are doing, um, the legal thing, and you are an attorney, and, uh-
Right, I mean, I, I will have no problem signing off on this order, Mayor.
Great.
You know, should it carry at tonight's meeting? And it's, it's, I think it's the exact same order, John, that we presented to council in June of last year?
Yes, Mayor.
I mean, I asked you, John, because I don't have that, maybe I should have had that, uh, resol, but, but I, I think you know.
No, Mr. Kissinger, you know what, I'm calling for the question.
It's, it's exactly the same.
I think we've already discussed it enough.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Two. C, consideration and possible action of order 2021-06-0029, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales adopting an amendment to the job description for Nogales Housing Authority Executive Director.
Second.
Discussion. Go ahead.
Mr. Massey, um, can we, can we actually do that? Is that a, a legal, uh?
Can you amend the job description?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there's no further authority besides council. There's, there's some debate, I guess, over the years, whether, um, uh, Mayor-
Yes.
Whether the manager can amend job descriptions. I think we've had some, maybe some controversies, but especially as it relates to department directors, I think the best practice, I'm not really gonna say that it's absolutely legally required, but in, in the nature of a transparent government operation, I think job descriptions for dep, for department directors should come to city council, especially now that you're going to be, uh, confirming appointments. So, yes, I mean, there's, if you can't do it, no one can do it. So, someone has to be able to do this, it has to be city council.
Do you remember this was done with the fire department, with Mr. Verona requested that? That was done. And, uh, to, for the council, what was that?
We have a question, who's, who seconded the motion, Mayor?
Mr. Diaz.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry about that. This discussion was held with Mr. Verona towards the fire department, and we voted on, uh, uh, doing this because we decided that as a council that there were people in the department that were capable of doing the job, and, 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 and we were gonna give them an opportunity for that, for somebody within the department to get, uh, the job for fire chief.
So-
And, and let me, let me finish. And we voted on it, and, 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 and we made the decision at the time, and we opened it up for the employees of the fire department. At that time, it seemed like the people that were interested, something happened, or, I don't know, they decided not to. Then it came back again, and Mr. Verona, I think, brought it back and said-
I think your memory is-
Yes, Mr. Verona brought it back and said, you know what, let's, let's leave it like it is. So, that's when Chief Sergeant was hired, okay? But we can do this, yes.
Yep, but you said the magic word right now when you said, we opened it up to the whole department.
Yeah.
This wasn't announced, uh, as far as I can remember, this, uh, vacancy happened back in January, and there was never an announcement of a, of a opening or, or for application process. And it was, uh, never, you know, it'd be, it'd be fine if we could approve this tonight and then open it up for the rest of the employees, so they can have the opportunity to also apply for the job, 'cause there's, there's a lot of employees that, that, you know, that have worked in the city for a long time, and, and they're just looking for, for an opportunity to step up, step up the ladder.
Yeah. Well, when we opened it up for the fire department, it was for one person only. Dear, I don't know if you remember, I'm not gonna mention his name, but it was for one person only, and that person decided not to.
Right, and maybe that comment, if-
Yes, go ahead.
-maybe that comment is more appropriate for the next, uh, motion and next order-
Yes.
About whether to, or not to fill the position tonight. This, uh, motion that's on the-
Yeah.
Before the council is just to amend the job description.
Yeah, to amend the job description.
It's not gonna open, it kind of works.
Well, I should have opened it last year with the fire department.
You know, 'cause it's gonna, you know, all departments are gonna wanna create, wanna create and change their, that we, you know, we got, like Mr. Mahorca says, you know, we got qualified people within the system, just, you know, right now, we're talking about housing, uh, you know, say, fire department, other departments, uh, and, you know, the, the next step has been neglected 'cause of, you know, the, the degree, and, and I think that's the biggest issue that we've had, um, personnel jumping or to, to the next level, is the degrees. We've, we've, uh, you know, I recall the chief, uh, police, uh, you know, before he came chief, he, he had to get his degree, so he went back to school and, and, uh, and got his degree and to qualify for, for being the chief, you know? And here we're opening, you know, positions, uh, in, in other departments, just by, you know, not, not having the degrees, uh, and let, you know, let the experience talk, um, you know, I think we should at least put a provision that they, they must put in to get a degree, like we force everybody else to get a degree, uh, within a certain term, and not just be a freebie.
Yes, go ahead.
Are you done, Mr. Montana?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
It's all yours.
Yeah. So, um, I do not believe that changing, uh, job descriptions, uh, to favor specific employee is good policy. It's clear to me that it's not consistent with other, um, current openings right now, like Parks and Rec. It requires a, a bachelor's degree. So, I understand, Mr. Thompson does a well, a good job, again, he's been there. The opening, again, has been there since January, and I've inquired a couple of times about the opening and when it was going to occur. I know that, um, Mr. Bachelier, uh, turned in his letter, and a few days later, a week or so, um, you know, the opening was up again for, for that position, which requires a bachelor's degree. I value a college degree, and so do the people that have gone out and invested in it. So, um, I don't think, again, it's good policy to be doing these sorts of things. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else? Hear none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Just three, four? Just three, four? That's what it sounded like. Roll call? Okay, roll call. All right, let's go roll call. Aye?
Nay.
Nay?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay.
You are correct, Mayor.
Yes.
Your ears were perfect.
Okay. D. Consideration and possible action of Order 2021-06-030, an order of the council of the city of Nogales Arizona approving the appointment of Nogales Housing Authority Executive Director. Yes, go ahead. Do I have a second for discussion? Second discussion. Mr. Kissinger, I'm going to excuse myself for about five minutes, but I actually think you have the authority to appoint that person without us having to go through a council.
So do we need to vote on this?
No, they got it planned already.
Vice Mayor, you're presiding.
Yeah, they're planning, yeah.
So do you want to proceed with the question?
I just want to ask a question. Who are we appointing? It's not me here.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Are you on 7D? It says the appointment of Robert Thompson as the executive director is hereby approved. That would be the vote that's before the court, before the council.
Are you on 7D? Order 06030? So.
I have this conversation. That's why, I'm sorry, I was just reading at this. You mentioned Mr. Alvarado, you're saying we already figured it out. To be very honest, I was reading a different, and I never saw the name of Robert Thompson. Even though if Robert Thompson is the person, let me tell you, he's proven to be a very, very efficient person.
He is.
Mr. Massey?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, the vice mayor's presiding.
So I have no doubt that he did a very, very good job. In the past, there, there's been openings for other employees. They never, never come out and say, hey, I would like to have a certain job, whatever job. So now, if we figure and we know that he is really a qualified person, to me, it's my opinion, okay? I don't have any.
Can I make a comment? Okay. And, and it's, you know, it's not against John, it's not against Robert. It's not, you know, it's the process. You know, we're changing, we're changing the bachelors, we're changing the, the requirements and all that. It's, you know, there is, and here's the man that just retired a couple of years ago from the housing. There is qualified people in housing that, that little step of, of the degree kept them from applying for these jobs. Have we given those people the opportunity? They've been there 20 years, 15 years, I don't know how many years. That's my, my, my concern. We're, we're, we're giving those people a slap in the face. We're giving those people a slap in the face because they've been there much more time than Mr. Thompson. And Mr. Thompson's a great guy, don't take me wrong. But we've always talked, let the people progress in their own departments. Uh, and we're not doing that. That is my concern.
Yes, go ahead.
Best, I think we gave an opportunity to a city employee to be part of the housing, and we had a terrible experience, to be honest. That's my experience. And we gave an opportunity to an employee, and he did a terrible job. So now we know a people that is capable for the job, why don't we give him the opportunity? I don't see, I, I see your point. I, I do understand your point.
Well, you know, if you say about going up a step within a department, I can understand that. But going up a step within the city of Nogales, Mr. Thompson is, I'm going to tell you one thing. Besides Mr. Kissinger, I've never seen an employee step up like Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson, I've seen him be the, one of the best supervisors the PD has. Mr. Thompson has, has proven himself in that office over there, okay, as deputy and as acting city manager, and while he was in those two positions, he was doing the housing. And if you can't believe that, talk to the housing employees. And you tell me which housing employee there says that they can do better job than Mr. Thompson? Because I've talked to them, and Mr. Thompson and Mr. Kissinger have talked to them, and they make a great team with Mr. Thompson, all right? And I was a director, when Hector was a director, neither did Hector or I had a degree. We didn't have degrees. And I was a public works director for four years, okay? So degrees not always get you, common sense gets you in the job and, and performance and working at. Degrees don't always get the, the right person, okay?
Right, hit the produce industry well with a degree.
Okay. But I'm going to tell you one thing. Mr. Thompson is more capable than anybody else. And if you have a, if you can talk to the people in the housing right now and tell them which one of them wants to take the director position, you bring them to me and bring it to Mr. Kissinger because I want to see that person. Because I haven't heard of anybody in housing that wants to take that position. I don't know where you had that information from, Mr., but I'm going to tell you one thing. Mr. Thompson is, is capable, and like I said, Mr. Kissinger, all he has to do is bring us the name of the person he wants to select for the position. It's not up to us to select the position, even though it did pass on the city charter.
I understand. And like I said to Vice Mayor, Ms. Melendez, it's not that I'm not, you know, I know Mr. Thompson. I've known him for probably 20 years. And he does a great job. But we're doing this change, and have we presented an opportunity for, to the people?
I think the change that we're doing is the better for that department to be up to, to, to be up to par and, and to not skip a beat. Because he's been doing the work for the past six, seven months. And he's been working directly with staff over there. So I, I don't know, I don't know where this, you know, where this is coming from. But I mean, Mr. Kissinger has all the authority of appointing somebody over there if he wishes. He's bringing that to us because this is a, you know, even though, even though it did pass on the charter that's, that says that all directors are going to be brought in front of the council to make a decision or, or select. But the, the selection that Mr. Kissinger has for the housing, and I think it's, like I said, it's not going to skip, skip a beat. It's going to be a good job. And he'll do a 110, 150% work on that, you know? And believe me, when, like I said, Hector did a great job as a director. That's why he was all, all those years. And he started, he started as finance, if I'm not mistaken, weren't you? He was a finance person. So, so, you know, to have a, to have a lieutenant that's 20 years in service in the PD become, and, and wish to become a director of housing, I think that's a great move. That's a great move.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm not questioning Mr. Thompson's ability. I know he's a, a good worker, he's intelligent, and he, and he's a great manager. It's, it's just the process looks kind of, I don't know, kind of shady, you know? I remember one time at the beginning of my term, they, they employed the human resource person. And there was a lot of discussion about that, and not because of the person, because of the process. I remember that. And, and, and we're doing the same thing right now, so, you know? And Mr. Massey mentioned a, a word transparency right now for transparency issues. And, and I think, you know, the, the thing that we're concerned about is the transparency and the fairness to, to the other employees.
And from what I understand, the HUD is very happy with Mr. Thompson, too. Is Mr. Kissinger, would you like to say something on behalf of Mr. Thompson, or, or at least HUD or housing, whatever?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hector, I believe that the decision to put Robert Thompson as housing director is in the best interest of the city of Nogales. He's been doing it for close to, I think, close to a year now with great support from staff, great support from mayor and council. I believe that he has the equivalency of any other requirements that anyone should have to do that job. He's, has a proven record. I've spoken with Martha and staff from, about Mr. Thompson. They're very, very happy that we, we brought his name forward for the council's decision. They are looking for some stability over there. I believe that Robert can bring that stability over there. He's been interviewing for that job for six to seven months now. I believe that he's the best candidate out of all of the city employees to take over the housing director. And I would hope that, that this council would approve my recommendation, his appointment to that position.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I'm glad you mentioned that there was six interviews for this position.
No, sir. I said, he's been interviewing for that position for six months. Every day when he comes to work, he's been showing to me and to the board and to this council that he's capable, more than capable of doing that job. So what I was trying to communicate to you is that he has proven himself to me, and I hope to you too, that he is the best candidate to take on the position of director of our housing.
He's been doing the presentations and our commission meetings. I'm sure you, we've all been there. He's the one that's been, he did the budget, he's worked with the staff to do the budget, and he's done everything with, with, with housing. So, you know? I've been, I've been looking at him more as, as a housing director than a, the acting city manager and deputy, honestly.
And again, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not questioning his ability.
And I, I understand. I understand what you mean.
You know, it's just the, the process. Like, you know, if we, we, if we would go to the housing authority and, and hire an employee from the housing authority to be the, the Parks and Rec Department Director, you know, I'm, I'm guessing that a lot of people there at the Park and Rec would be pretty furious, you know, because they, they weren't taken into consideration. And, and, you know, he comes from the housing authority to be the Parks and Rec Director. And it, it's just the process, it doesn't apply.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I understand. I understand. Mr. Kissinger?
Mr. Mayor, maybe this would help with the council. If I had the opportunity to put one of our employees into a director position that has shown that they can do the job as well as Robert has, I would bring the exact same thing back for your approval. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Kissinger. Thank you. All right. I guess we'll just take a vote on this.
I see. What happened to his lieutenant position that he was?
The PD?
Uh huh.
I think he's retired, retired or something, I don't know. Did he retire, or where's he at?
Was it the process, you know, coming back to his old job?
Not that I know of. I don't know. What's happening with the PD? Is he retiring or?
So, Mr. Mayor, if you approve this position, this appointment tonight, he would have to retire from the police department. He can't hold both positions.
Okay.
So he would have to no longer work for the police department, and he would be working for the housing.
Okay.
John? Yeah? So he will be drawing from his retirement as soon as he submits his paperwork.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So I talked to Mr. Thompson about that because Ms. Montell asked me that question previously. And the rules have changed with public safety retirement. He won't be able to draw down on his retirement, but his retirement stays in place. So when he leaves the employment of the city of Nogales, he, at that point, is my understanding, he will be able to draw down on his public safety retirement because the rules have changed on that. So that's what Robert told me, but I can't verify that. I mean, his relationship with the PSPRS is, is his.
Go ahead, Mr..
And I think that change is only if he leave the police force and take the position with the same employer. So if he took a position with any other employer, he could start his double dipping.
Double dipping.
So, I mean, that just shows you.
So he's not going to be double dipping?
Not yet, Mayor.
I'm just joking.
But, Mr. Mayor, those aren't the city rules, that's PSPRS rules.
What happens with, with the wage comp, when he, does it change to the housing wage, or does he?
He will be paid at the rate of the housing director that's in the budget tentative or the final budget that you'll be approving.
But his retirement's at the, at the police budget, as, as he retired as, as a policeman?
So we, we don't pay our retirees out of the budget, Mr. Maldonado? They're paid out of, out of the public safety?
When he was earning when he was a policeman.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand the question.
No, well, his retirement is off basically what he earned as a policeman.
Yeah, it doesn't continue. His pension at the PD doesn't continue.
Doesn't continue.
After, after he leaves. He doesn't accumulate anymore, John. See or no?
I, I'm not sure what the question.
Right. His, his employment and contributions to PSPRS
It stops.
will, will be completed, and then he'll have another employment that pays in TAS or RS.
Uh huh.
That's different.
That's different. So that's where the.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, let's take a vote on this. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. What did you count?
I counted two nays.
Two nays? Are you sure about that?
Oh, you're, three nays. I'm sorry, three nays.
Okay?
All right, we're clear.
Okay, resolution? Okay, we're done with that. A. Consideration and possible action of Resolution R 2021-06-004, resolution by the city of Nogales, Arizona requesting that the United States government lift the travel restrictions and complete open, open, completely open the port of entries that unfairly, that unfairly burden economy, the economy of the city of Nogales.
Second.
Is it up to us?
Mr. O'Neal, will you read the resolution, please? It's in your folder.
Whereas on March 20, 2020, the US government first announced that non-essential travel across the US-Mexico border would be temporarily restricted to prevent the spread of COVID-19 between two countries. And whereas these restrictions have been extended by 30-day increments throughout the course of the pandemic, with the most recent extension leaving the restrictions in place through May 21st, 2021. And whereas, Nogales recognizes the vital need to maintain cross-border supply and allow essential workers to continue traveling across the border unimpeded, preserving our close economic partnership during these unprecedented times. And whereas, by national cooperation to minimize the risk presented by COVID-19 and prioritize the safety of our communities remains the utmost importance while we work to overcome this public health crisis. And whereas, with over one year of restricted travel, we also must recognize the significant impact these restrictions have had on individuals, families, communities, and especially businesses on both sides of the border. And whereas, businesses in Nogales, Arizona, especially the ones in the first block of the city that rely on the shoppers coming in from Mexico have been impacted more significantly than, than with the border closure. And whereas, almost all the businesses located in downtown Nogales have closed, many within a couple of months of the travel restrictions. And whereas, the majority of those businesses will more than likely not be able to reopen. And whereas, the effects of these restrictions.
And whereas, the effects of these restrictions have caused an undue burden to our economy and that of the county and the entire state of Arizona. And whereas, border communities such as Nogales were founded on cross-border trade and rely on sales tax, the majority of which is directly attributed to Mexican visitors. And whereas, because of the travel restrictions, sales tax revenues have dropped drastically and impacts on our retail tourism service and merchant sectors have been disastrous. Whereas, the city of Nogales has partnered with Santa Cruz County and the Mariposa Health Clinic to operate one of the most effective COVID-19 vaccination centers in the state of Arizona. Whereas, as of June 3, 2021, the community of Nogales and Santa Cruz County have vaccinated 82% present of its eligible population with more than 69% fully vaccinated. Now therefore be resolved that.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Is there any discussion on this?
Just a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Is this going, it says here to the US government, where, what, where at the city government?
Well, you can send it to the Congress, like I did before.
Homeland Security?
Homeland Security, you can send it to the senators, you can send it to the governor, you can send it anywhere.
We haven't had any response, right?
Can, can you?
I've already sent four of them.
Can, what, can you send a copy to each department?
Yes.
And maybe one to the president?
Yeah, we can send one to the White House. I've already sent one to the Vice President, too.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's knock on wood, the 21st of this month, it's open. Verda?
Yep.
All right.
We need it.
Do we need it? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, number nine, ordinances. A, consideration possible action of ordinance O 2021-06-003, first reading of an ordinance of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona amending ordinance number 20X, city of Nogales zoning ordinance and rezoning approximately 0.54 acres of undeveloped land from a single family to multifamily. Mr. Kissinger.
Mr. Mayor, you did an excellent job on reading that.
Do we have a motion on it?
We.
Yeah, okay, the motion.
Second.
All right. Okay.
Thank you for reading that for us, Mr. Mayor.
That's all right, Mr.
We have, we have Mr. Paz on, 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 on the computer there who can give you the explanation of the particulars of this particular order.
Perfect, perfect.
Sam?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Mr. Paz. This is a zoning request submitted by Martha of Nogales, represented by Mr. Flores. Mr. Flores should be in touch with us tonight. Uh, this request is a zoning portion of parcel 105-18.
Sam, you got to get closer to your mic.
Okay. Located along San Jose, on Parker Drive, this zoning request is consistent with the development plan control, channel 10, east of the hill of the zoning change. Public hearing notices were published in the newspaper on the property. Notice is worse thanks to the shrugging of the owners that did treatment of the damage to the house. Planning and zoning commission public hearing was held on October. The resolution is recommended for further improvement. We just want to tell them. After any questions?
Mayor, Mr. Flores is present in case the council has any specific questions about the project itself.
About the zoning project?
Correct.
For the construction?
The zoning change in the project, the proposed project.
Perfect. Is there anybody, have any questions for Mr. Paz? For the presidency? Any?
Is there any people that are here representing?
From that, from that, no. Not that, nobody. Besides Mr. Flores?
Mr. Flores is here, and I don't, there's one other lady in the, in the lobby, but I don't think she's here for this.
For this, okay.
I can go and ask her real quick if you want.
Well, no, it doesn't matter. What, did you want to talk to somebody?
I just, I just want to make sure there's, what's the, you know, is there a concern or?
There were some letters written, did you read them? Okay. Yes, go ahead.
And it says here that the Planning and Zoning Commission has already recommended.
Yes.
Propose the amendment.
Yes.
They had a public hearing, Mayor.
Yes.
And there was letters, and I think there were individuals that attended the public hearing. And as a result of the consideration of the matter that the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to recommend.
Yeah, to recommend the rezoning. And, and the planning zoning director feels comfortable with this, Mr.?
Yes, sir, staff is, staff is recommending the.
Staff is recommending it also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
B, consideration possible action of ordinance O 2021-06-004, first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona amending ordinance number 20X, city of Nogales zoning ordinance and rezoning approximately 1.92 acres of undeveloped land from a single family to LI, planning and zoning. Mr. Kissinger. Uh, what is the, make a motion first? Sorry. Before, Mr., you got to wake me up here. Come on. That's kind of like.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. Discussion. Mr. Kissinger.
Before, can you recognize Mr. Diaz?
Uh, no, and Mr. Diaz?
I'll, I'll be abstaining.
Abstaining from it. You can remain in the room, though. But you can.
Right. I mean, the, the.
Unless you want.
No, 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 the, I, I, the protocol is that he shouldn't be on the dais. He's not on the dais anyways, Mayor. So unless, you want to send him way back to the back? No, no, that's all right. He can be there as long as he just shuts off his mic and does not participate in this discussion. Right, right. He, he is a member of the public, he retains his First Amendment rights, so if he wants to be heard as a member of the public, he just cannot be voting on him, Mayor.
I know, Mr. Massey.
Okay.
All right, are we okay? Mr. Kissinger.
Mr. Mayor, this is also.
Say something else. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is also a zoning change request, and I'll let Mr. Paz talk to Mayor and Council about the particulars of this case.
Okay.
Sam?
Mr. Kissinger, this zoning change request is submitted by Neil Bruno of the LLC, the zoning parcel, the residential 12, this parcel located at least 250 highway, opposite the. This zoning is specific to the development code and general plan of the user criteria of the zoning change. As far as the other case, public hearing notice to public community, post on the property, and sent to the property owners of the neighborhood at the subject parcel. Public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission was also called on appropriate, and the zoning change was recommended for a private commission order. A nearby resident events committed in this case. The mayor, the council issues, the amendment and the surveying and house require stipulation of the change. Require any future site development plans to be considered with any interest held in the property by the residents.
Mr. Mayor, before you take any action on both Mr. Bruno and his president, Mr. Price.
Let me just, before I, before I ask him to speak, because I have the, the two request forms, I want to ask the planning and zoning director just a question. There's, I received a letter from, from the property owner, and the concern is the road that goes up to the residence. Can you explain to me, will they, will there be any obstruction, anything that has to do with that road going up to the residence that they've been using there since they've lived there all their life?
I got only the strategy, the zoning application, so there's one situation really determining the use of the property. And so I believe Mr. Bruno and his business associates have intentionally made a toll yard operation. I'm not sure if they plan on interrupting or making or bringing any improvements in the area. I reference to the access routes, I believe Mr. Price and other nearby property owners really kind of falls into the gray area if it is an actual public, uh, private. So this area, along with any other areas in the state of Nogales, kind of fall into this category of public legacy development. So legacy development means that they developed, were built, been sold, been split lots, recovered away from the civilian, and so has some non-conformity issues, and has access issues, and that's just part of the nature of the development in that area. I believe the primary amendments submitted by staff today is to really try to protect the rise of the system that these, and buildings, to make sure that other neighbors are being driven, and the zoning change also needs criteria.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Is that road grandfathered in? As long as it's been there?
Your Hon, or excuse me, Mr. Mayor and members of the council?
That's.
Oh, your, your honor.
It sounds okay.
I, I've called, no.
No, no.
Yeah. I'm telling you, Mr. Massey, you're that short. I know, I know. It's getting late, Mayor.
I know, I know.
No, but, Mayor, at this point, and I think what I heard the planning director say is, for the purpose of this zoning amendment tonight, we haven't been presented any kind of legal documents with respect to this road. So I'm not able to really provide an absolute legal answer on the grandfather rights. My understanding is it's, it's an easement, and the reason why I take that at face value is because I believe that's what Mr. Price said to the council last month when he spoke before the council. And so usually easements are private property rights, which we would not really have presented to, to the planning director for any kind of reference. So, but what the amendment and the stipulation as presented to council in the order tonight does is, you know, the only question tonight is whether to rezone. But if it does rezone, the anticipation is it will be developed, consistent with the new zoning. And so what the stipulation does is when the new owner comes in to get a site development plan approval, the planning director is being directed in this ordinance to take into account the easement rights. And so at that point, the easement documents should be presented to the planning director, and he would make sure that the site development plan is consistent with the easement. So in other words, he wouldn't approve a development of the property that would infringe on the easement. But we don't have the easement in front of us. We haven't had that presented to staff yet.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. So we'll, Neil Bruno? Will you please, up to the podium? And state your name and, and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Neil Bruno. My address is 361 East Patagonia Highway, Nogales, Arizona. Mr. Mayor, I've prepared a statement that I'd like to read before the, before you and the council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Neil Bruno, and I represent a small LLC named Polga. Polga is comprised of my wife, my former brother-in-law, and me. We own a small parcel, number 10309022A, which is located on Price Hill Road, just off the Patagonia Highway. This small 1.92 acre undeveloped parcel is currently zoned SFR 12. Our plan has been to apply for, and if legal and compliant with the city of Nogales planning and zoning rules and regulations, have the zoning changed to LI, which is consistent with the current zoning of adjacent parcels in the area. On February 20, uh, excuse me, on February 11, 2021, I had a Zoom conference call with Mr. Samuel Paz, the Planning and Zoning Director of the city of Nogales. At the time, COVID prohibited any in-person meetings on city property. During this call, I stated my plan to rezone the property in question and inquired on the correct and legal procedures of the process. I was advised to submit an application, and that the application would be reviewed by the director, and if consistent with zoning rules and regulations, would be approved and submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review. I submitted the appropriate application on or about February 23, 2021. Mr. Paz subsequently determined the rezoning request was within the parameters of rezoning for the area and began the mandatory notification process to neighboring property owners. All property owners within the designated distance of the applying property for rezoning were notified and invited to comment or participate at the regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The meeting was scheduled for April 8, 2021, where the rezoning item was scheduled on the commission's agenda. Mr. Paz confirmed to the commission that all statutory requirements had been met to include neighborhood mailing, legal advertisement, and public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission. On April 8, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously, four to zero, to approve the rezoning request. At this meeting, there was no opposition to the rezoning request. On May 12, 2021, at the city of Nogales council meeting, Mr. Price, a person who resides outside of the mandatory notice area, addressed the mayor and council during the council's call to the public. Mr. Price stated, and I quote, "We have a problem. Our access road, according to the rezoning request by one of your councilmen and the Brunos, will be cut off," unquote. I must rebut Mr. Price's statement in order to bring forth truth and clarity to these allegations. First, let me be clear. Councilman Diaz at no time requested to have this rezoning change made. As I explained previously, being a member of a small LLC, it is Polga requesting this change. Secondly, the rezoning of this small parcel will have no effect on Mr. Price or any others to access their properties. No one can cut off his access by rezoning of adjacent lands. The road in question is an easement, and therefore he cannot be cut off. As you are aware, a property owner may not interfere with the purpose of a legal easement. Therefore, the new owner of this rezoned parcel cannot interfere with the easement access Mr. Price currently enjoys. During the call to the public, Mr. Price made the following statement, and I quote, "I would like the Planning and Zoning Director told me this has to be approved by the mayor and the council, or it can't be. So I am requesting that you deny approval so that I'm safe to go up and down in case of fire or anything like that. And it used to be there was a fire on that hill every year, so we won't survive. It's just a matter of life and death," unquote. I would like to clarify some things Mr. Price stated that day. In the last 30 years that I have been the owner of my business located just below the property in question, there has not been a fire in our area or on or near the parcel we are seeking to rezone. I don't know if Mr. Price is aware that the rezoning of this parcel will in no way affect his ability to go up and down, and I presume he meant the road. Mr. Price will retain his freedom to access his residence 24/7. The rezoning of the parcel in question cannot and will not affect his ability to access his property. To define this as a life and death situation is just not factual. At no time has it been concealed that Polga is willing to sell the parcel in question to Joe Diaz Jr., who is the son of Councilman Diaz. Councilman Diaz has recused himself from voting on this matter to avoid any inappropriate viewpoints of favoritism. As mentioned before, the Planning and Zoning Director, along with the entire Planning and Zoning Commission, determined the rezoning of this parcel not only to be legal, but fell well within the parameters and requirements of a parcel's rezoning in our community. According to Article 1, Section 100, zoning has three aims: to assure orderly community growth and thereby to safeguard the general public welfare. Number two, to regulate the use of private property, therefore protecting the community against harmful invasions of buildings and structures. Number three, to conserve property values. In Article 1, Section 100, Paragraph H, Subparagraph 6, it is stated. In Article 1, Section 100, Paragraph H, Subparagraph 6, it is stated, "All rezoning requests will be examined in the field to determine not only their compatibility with adjacent land uses, but also their feasibility from a topographical standpoint." Also in Subparagraph 8, it is stated, "No zoning changes will be approved without due consideration of all relating factors. Rezoning for the sake of rezoning to promote an objective unrelated to the function and compatibility of an area will generally not be given much consideration." Therefore, the following is true: rezoning this parcel has been determined to be lawful; rezoning this parcel has been determined to be compatible with adjacent land uses; rezoning this parcel will promote economic growth; rezoning this parcel has been determined to benefit public welfare; rezoning this parcel has been determined to increase surrounding property values; the rezoning of this parcel has been determined to be consistent with legal easements and their access. These are some of the highlights and benefits that rezoning of this parcel will accomplish. Mr. Diaz Jr. plans to improve this parcel after he has purchased it and to develop it according to the standards in the building codes of the City of Nogales and Santa Cruz County. The business he plans to operate will not only improve our local community, excuse me, tax base, but our local economy as well. I do not know how many jobs Mr. Diaz Jr. intends to create through his new endeavor, but I am convinced he plans to be a lawful businessman in this community as well as becoming a good neighbor. I hope for one, he will have the opportunity to become a successful community job creator, a successful businessman, and a successful example of a hard-working young entrepreneur. I have been conducting business at 361 East Patagonia Highway for the last 30 years. During this time, I have never had a dispute with Mr. Price or any other neighbor for that matter. I believe as neighbors, we should encourage patience, understanding, and direct communication whenever possible. I also believe we should want the very best for our neighbors. They may not always be defined as adjacent parcel owners or homeowners. However, we should strive to work together to practice forgiveness and offer a hand of assistance whenever we can. I want Mr. Price to know and be confident that his access cannot be cut off or taken away by this rezoning change. His life is in no way threatened because of a new business in our area. His freedoms will remain the same and intact. Mr. Mayor and council members, I leave you with the following. Based on all the facts and statements that I have presented to you this evening, I encourage you to vote unanimously for the passing of this rezoning request. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for your time and patience in this matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bruno.
Thank you.
One question?
Only one comment, you know, Mr. Bruno.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way to, you know, and I appreciate you, your words and hearing all the questions I think there was on this, but, you know, there is a sale. You could plan to sell it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we, you know, and Sam, you're hearing, make sure that everything jumps just like you said it, so it won't disturb, you know, what you just said about making sure that their pathway is never obstructed or anything, you know? Does the sale make, change anything?
As far as easement goes, no, sir.
Okay.
It does not.
Mr. Paz, are you in agreement with that?
I am, sir. Whatever the mayor and council wishes, certainly follows instructions.
I did not hear you.
I said, yes, we're able to follow the instructions of the mayor and council, whatever the wish the mayor and council will follow.
Okay, Mr. Bruno, you know, talk about how the easement and all that cannot be interfered and all that, you know? Obviously, there's, he's gonna sell the property and there's gonna be a new owner, you know? Can we just make sure that, you know, the same thing that Mr. Bruno has mentioned right now continues with the new owners?
Mike, does easement go with the property or does it go with your?
With the property.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
The easement, of course, is recorded and it's an interest in this property that is held by another person, which is Mr. Price. But those property rights are generally private property rights. But what the ordinance that's in front of the city council tonight says, it does direct Mr. Paz that in future development applications, that Mr. Paz is to take into consideration the easement.
Yes.
So we are directing staff to respect the easement and make sure that development approval of the future owner is going to be consistent with the easement. But we don't have that easement document, so I think Mr. Price needs to bring that easement document into the staff so that they can review it when they have the development application in front of them.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Is there other private owners in that area?
Private owners of?
Residents, you know.
Within the 300 feet or?
Within the zoning area, the one that you want to zone.
Yes, there are, there are other residents. All of them were advised of the zoning change or the request to change the zoning and no one responded in a negative way. No one responded.
So nobody else has complaints?
No one else had an objection, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And as I mentioned before, Mr. Price is outside of that area.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Bruno? No? Thank you very much, Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
As the mayor is aware from our occasional encounters with the home people, we're a match set. It's been 61 years.
Well, congratulations.
30 years ago, they were in my wedding.
I have to apologize first. I did bring a copy of the document. I left it. Waiting with the.
Easement?
No, you got a copy. The copy that you brought.
The letters?
The letters.
Yes, yes, we got them.
Yes, it was also in there. Maybe I didn't leave it.
No, sir. There was just a copy of the letters.
All right. I, I'm calling you, your honor.
Hmm.
This morning, this weekend, I said, good morning. And the reason is, the only time I'm here is at 8:00 Mass. We're both thinking.
Okay.
We're both churchgoers.
Good, I'm proud of you.
I'll hand you a copy of what I did.
Right here. Okay, you have one? Yeah.
I would say that this would never have even entered the conversation if Mr. Bruno Senior were still alive. He was an absolute gentleman. We had interests in common.
Mr. Price, just for the record, sir, could you state your name and your address?
Jim Price. Jim Price, 160 East Price Hill Road, Nogales, Arizona, 85621.
Thank you very much, sir.
Where I've been there forever. And anyway, Mr. Bruno liked to pan for gold and I had all the equipment for panning for gold because I ran a she-lite mine in Baja, California for about two years. And we got together and we talked about this and had he still been alive, he would have called me and said, this is what's coming down the pike. Let's talk about it, you and I, now. And it never would have reached this point. But, you know, as life goes on, I think I've mentioned life is like a roll of bathroom tissue. The closer you get to the end, the faster it goes. And this Saturday, God willing, I'll turn 85. And this dear lady here has put up with me for 61 years. I was supposed to be a Marine fighter pilot and I played in one football game, too many the week before I was due to report to Quantico. I split that finger down the middle, broke it back across here, dislocated all of these, and because of that, bye-bye flight. And so I volunteered for the Army. And Mrs. McDonald, who used to run the draft board here, said, I can't take you. I said, why? Just because the Marine Corps has you classified 4F. I said, why would they do that? He said, so the Army can't get you. I said, but I want the Army to get me. She says, you'll have to bring me a letter from your doctor. Well, Dr. Moody used to be right over the old bus depot. He was a block away from the draft board. I went down there and we argued for an hour. He says, you're gonna be calling around in the mud. I said, that's me that's gonna be calling, calling, you know? My father was in for 32 years. I know what the military is about. Anyway, I got shipped off and I wound up in Hawaii. And because of my degree, I already had a degree from the U of A in journalism, I was sent to be in charge of Army information for the big island of Hawaii. And as a result of that, I met, I had five roommates on the side of the volcano. They were all military police. And the, I had two photographers in addition. They one day called me and said, you know, you have a date every night. How about taking care of your buddies? I said, you know, you get to use my Jeep for patrol. And they said, it's not really the same thing. So I called my girlfriend and said, can you get dates from my buddies? She said, yeah. Well, there was no TV back in those days, so we got together. Our services police for Hawaii called HASP had rented a beautiful home right on the beach. We would get together every evening and sing. There was nothing else to do. Till one day, my girlfriend says, can you come and pick me up at my house? My car's in the garage. I went to the queen, who was part of our little group, and said, will you go with me? Because I don't know where the girl lives. And she said, fine. One of the guys had a station wagon. She sat in the back, I sat in the front. We got there, I said, now, one more favor. I said, would you go to the front door with me? Because I don't even know her, I've never met her family. She said, absolutely. I got out like a gentleman. I opened the back door, I took her by the elbow, and that changed my whole life. 61 years ago. Yeah, it's been beautiful. And thank God she's been willing to put up with me for all that time. Anyway, that's.
Nice story, Mr. Price.
Yeah, that's the truth. In listening to what Neil had to say, I'll read just very quickly here. "I exercised due diligence before the planning and zoning vote on this matter by reaching out to Mr. Bruno, who was conveniently unavailable, and his wife assured me that he had nothing to do with the rezoning request. Sadly, neither statement was true. In the meantime, the Planning and Zoning Committee voted on the matter without acquiring all the facts, which is why I'm providing this outline." The approval was based upon a recommendation by one of the P&amp;Z members. Yes, it was Gomez, who used to be the fire marshal for the City of Nogales. He, as such, should have realized that there could be conflict on the road. I had just spent like $2,400 putting down a very special composite so that when it rains, it won't wash away. And that's to the benefit of everybody living in the area there. There's a toning company across the road from the Bruno property. On several occasions, Mr. Bruno requested that company to clear the road and I did also. And they basically shipped us west, but they have been recently moving their cars because they were blocking the road completely. We've taken care of that, I think. What I've said here is that, please be aware that in any event should occur in which emergency responders are summoned to provide aid and will access to my household is impeded for any reason, the resulting consequences to the city will be a direct result of tonight's council decision. Council members are civil servants, bound to serve the public, not self-interest. Due to otherwise, is an abuse of power and an affront to the public's trust. Likewise, blocking our access to federal property such as the mailboxes on the Patagonia Road is against the law. We have been advised by the local post office that in the event anyone parks in front of the boxes, we should call the police and have the offenders removed. That would seem to pertain in the present situation also. Please keep these points in mind as you cast your respective votes. Whereas the planning and zoning decision is beyond the time of appeal, the City of Nogales Planning and Zoning Director has advised as an approval, the decision is subject to approval or denial by the mayor and council. The information presented here is a reason for our request. There was a lack of candor and that bothered me completely. A lack of candor, I guess, can best be described as failure to tell the complete truth, which is another way of saying lying. That concerns me simply because that piece of property is where I've lived. That's why we got our name on there. Rudy Romero, who used to have the aristocrat ornamental ironwork, would have stopped to it. When Manny Ruiz was with the City of Nogales, he had a sign put up. He says, you can't put your name on my dog. I had allowed him to move against Lee Larson's instructions. He says, you'll be sorry if you let him move your easement road. He said, never fails. Well, he was right. Lee's gone. You know, all the early people involved in this thing are gone, Mr. Bruno, Lee Larson, all the others. So what I'm asking for then is to keep in mind the fact that there was a lack of candor and how you get around that, I don't know. We are concerned and there was a fire on the property because I came home one day and told her that there was a fire. This, you know, this was before, I think when Mr. Bruno was still living back east. Because he came, he did some work for me. He was a fantastic cement worker. I mean, really fantastic, which used to be his profession. And we've always gotten along pretty well. But his dad was a very special human being and this would never have happened, as I said, had he been alive when this arose. We would have talked it out and everything would have been fine. I watched the man sit there and teach squirrels how to eat out of his shirt pocket. He was a good, good human being. So what I'm asking is that you keep in mind the fact that there was a lack of candor and, you know, we're being told that you can't obstruct the road. Maybe yes, maybe no. I don't know. That would be for my fellow collector here.
Mr. Massey's a good man.
And I can bring a copy of the document giving us the.
That would be helpful. If you can, if you could. You could bring that to Mr. Paz over at the Planning and Zoning Building or the Public Works Building.
I'll bring it tomorrow and I'll leave a copy with the city clerk.
Okay, that would work as well.
That would be best.
That would be work.
She does one whale of a job.
Yes. Yes, she does.
Yeah. Oh, I did call her several times the other day and I didn't get a response. And I called her and the next day she says, I wasn't here.
Yes.
It's probably a good reason for not responding.
Yes.
Okay, I have, are there any questions?
Is there any questions from anybody?
I just want to make sure, Mr., you just heard the comments, you know, I hope you're at ease that it can get blocked and it won't get blocked and that's.
I need something further and that's why I'm gonna bring that.
Yes.
All they ask is for.
Get everything squared away.
Paperwork to, on the easement and hopefully everything would be squared away. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Happy birthday Saturday.
Thank you. And we may make it to Mass, and we've been taking advantage of that. We've been sitting there very nicely, having coffee, watching it on TV.
Thank you.
Says, "If I don't use this, I look like an old man." I am an old man.
Hi.
Is there any discussion from anybody here? Any, anything?
Good question.
Here in none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Mr. Diaz, did you say anything, sir?
Are you trying to get into trouble, Mayor?
No, no, no. I saw him, he was like this, look, he looked like this. Make sure he won't say anything. Just joking. All right, let's go to Mayor and Consuls' report on current events. Start with you, Mr. Borquez.
Um, Mayor, this month, unfortunately, was kind of a sad month, you know, I attended- I attended the vigil for, for Officer Britton on that same week of the accident, and it was, there was not that many people, unfortunately, because it was the same night as the graduation, the Nogales High School graduation. But there was a, a pretty good turnout. Then I also attended the funeral and the wake and funeral ceremonies at the high school auditorium. It was a beautiful ceremony, unfortunately, you know, it was for something that, for, for a set event, but it was, it was very impressive, you know. Really nice farewell to Officer Britton, and, and a lot of the community was present there at, at funeral services. And that's all I have for, for this month.
Thank you very much, Consulman. Consulman?
You know, likewise, like Mr. Borquez, you know, attended the sad Mass and all that of Brittany. And I've been baseball, baseball, baseball. That's all. It's been a-
Now, you already-
It's been a good-
You already went all the way to October.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a good season, which, you know, I could call, you could call me a liar, because that's what I thought I was having the worst season of, when it all started, but it's been a great season.
That's good.
And, you know, I saw Mr. Bonilla out there, having great, did you have a hamburger up there?
I had actually nachos, and I haven't, I haven't seen the game in over, I think, twenty-five years.
Yeah, you gotta come back. You know, it's a great place to spend a couple of hours, watching the kids play and have fun, have a good dinner. And I'm planning, hopefully, next Thursday, at Little League Park. T-Mobile gave us a, gave us a, there's a actual national T-Mobile homerun derby. So we're hosting our own homerun competition on Thursday. You know, it's been crazy, because, you know, we've been having only a few help, but, you know, and then Friday's, Friday's our last day, but hopefully, I think everybody's very happy. You know, the city and Parks, Parks and Rec have been great with us, working together with me, with all the arrangements and all that, and I appreciate all the consul for all your support. That's all I got, man.
Thank you very much. Consulman, Bonilla?
Um, a little bit on, on Officer Britton's funeral and all that. I feel privileged, Mayor, to have been able to help and participate. You know, all the agencies, DPS, and, you know, help them out with whatever they needed. I, I really feel privileged and honored to have been able to help and, you know, participate. It was a total team effort. Mr. Thompson and I were, at one point, a little bit stressed out, but, you know, thank God we were able to do it, and, and I feel privileged. Also, I had not been to the Valle Verde paving project, and I was very impressed and very satisfied with the job they're doing. And also with the finance department, they did, they prepared our, our budget books and, you know, kudos to them for a great job.
Did you see the pour, concrete pour today in four, in the four corners there in Valle Verde?
Yeah.
They did half of it today, half tomorrow on Thursday. That's a great job.
On concrete?
Yeah. Very good work. Other works are doing a great job.
I have a question for Mr. Bonilla. How come you turned off your mic when you stood up for the-
He does that every time. He does it all the time. Yeah. That's all right. That's all right. That, that cut my eulogy half, halfway because of what he did. I told him, you know, that-
Yeah, he did.
Yeah. Es son los pasados pelones. Vice Mayor?
Well, I also attended the memorial ceremonies. It was impressive. I mean, it was, I mean, it was something very sad, but beautiful. And we're planning on the Fiesta's closing event, and the border is gonna be open around that. So we're holding to see if something's gonna happen on the twenty-first.
June twenty-first. You wanna bet?
Can you sign it, please?
Yes. You wanna bet?
Yeah. Because we wanna find out if it, if it's gonna be open, we'll continue with the event. If not, we'll see what we can do.
Let's, let's hope for the best.
On July? No, he said this month, huh?
Let it, let it, por favor, let it. June twenty-first.
June. That's all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We, we got an email from Mr. Kissinger saying something about the vaccines that were being donated to Mexico so that the, so that the people from Mexico could start coming in in July. So it's gonna-
Oh, that's, that's, that email from John is necraes. The, the part about the vaccines, yes, but I don't know. It's gotta be June. Come on.
Mr. Mayor, I just shared information. I didn't write the information.
June the twenty-first, they can come and get vaccinated here.
I, I, I don't even claim that it's good information, bad information. It was given to me by the clerk of the city of Nogales, and I thought it would be important to share with Maran Council.
No wonder. That's why you were talking about July. Did you see that?
Let me tell them where you got it from.
I got it from a politician like-
Oh, my God.
They're lying. They knew what the, what the Prime Minister of Canada said.
Yes.
Gets a percentage of his people vaccinated, he's got in July.
Yes. Well, that's in Canada. This is, we're talking Mexico here. Let's, let's hope for the best. Let's go. Consulman Diaz, you have it?
The President, the President came out and said that he got the one million vaccines and donating them to the southern cities so they would open the border, but, but we're gonna give it, you know, I disagree, you know, supposedly they're gonna give it to the eighteen through thirty-nine age group. That's what he, that's what the President said.
They should give it to the ones that have the crossing rights.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
So they get it, and they can come across fast.
But that, that's what the President from Mexico said.
Vamos a ver. Consulman Diaz, you have something, sir?
Yeah, I got a couple, couple of things. I'd like to echo the comments by my fellow consul people here that, I went to Jeremy's farewell, his, his, I attended both days. It was very sad. It was very heartbreaking. Jeremy worked for me as, as a very young man, I, with the tow trucks and his love of cars and all that, so we got along great. I saw him the day that, that he passed away, car to car. And on a more positive note, well, not, not really, but his, his son graduated the, the, the day that Jeremy was being, you know, his last day, when they had the funeral, his son was graduating, so, I'm sorry, let me, Jeremy died, and the following day, his son graduated, Justin.
Right.
Okay, so, but I attended both days. It was very sad, and like I say, Jeremy worked for me off and on, part-time, and his son, Justin, started to work for my son after school from August to June first. There's a program at Nogales High in the auto mechanic shop, and there was three boys from the auto mechanic shop here in Nogales that got an internship in three different dealerships in Tucson, Arizona. Justin got an internship with Royal Kia, and I've been talking with him every day, and he's doing great. He's doing very well. It's a two-and-a-half-week internship, and he seems to like it, they seem to like him, so it might become permanent, so, so that's a really good thing. We still gotta plan the certificates. I got five certificates for three policemen and two fire, one fireman and one EMT to give out. Maybe June twenty-eighth, we can give them out to the, to these deserving officers that won this recognition from the BFW. I'll be at the BFW conference from Wednesday through Sunday of this following week. It'll be in Tucson at the Conquistador. And next year, our BFW National Convention is going to be in Phoenix, Arizona. So it's gonna be close by. I urge all veterans to go to the National Convention. I don't think it's gonna happen again in a long, long time, so it'd be a good time to go. Hector, the mayor, Mr. Massey, you know. And July twelfth, we're having a district meeting here in, BFW District Meeting here in Nogales. So we're gonna have a bunch of veterans running around on July twelfth here in Nogales, so. And that's all I got for right now. Thank you.
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
So, the next will be the future agenda items.
Uh, John, I know, I know I, I wanted to tell you not to put it on the agenda, but the street that I mentioned before, but I forgot about the Frank Reetwo. If we can have an update on that and what's going on, this is the agenda. I don't know if I included them the last time. We never talk about it during the project.
You have something to add?
Uh, yeah, you know, basically, follow-ups, you know, we've talked about the bank building, we talked about the Chaya Park, you know. I was here present and I'm the chief and, or, you know, legal kind of give, and, you know, we, I rec, you know, I, I recall with Mr. Cordova, when the incident happened, the city supported him in different ways, and see what we could do for the, in Jeremy's family, you know, in showing at least the same support, you know, for what, what we can do as, you know, as a city and the family.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Everything you wanted to not give in with the Chaya Park?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Chase.
Basically, Chase, the, the bank building, the Chaya Park, and then, and then it was, you know, and I, I was present when, when Mr. Cordova had, we had the incident with him and, and all the support that the city helped the family, you know, extending insurance and stuff like that, you know. See what we did and hopefully give Mr. Jeremy the, the same respects or something, you know.
So, Mr. Maldonado, the, the, the providing of insurance for Officer Britton is, is something that we need to discuss, and we'll definitely bring forward to-
Yeah. You know, what, what it is, what it was.
Right.
Off my head, I don't recall, but I know we did it very good.
I'll look at that and bring back some recommendations.
And I think we should support the, the family also.
Okay. Can I read my mayor's report?
Of course.
Did you skip me?
Yes. Where are you going?
Yeah, we, we're on- I'm proud of you. We're on number twelve adjournment, Mayor.
Counselor question.
Right away. All right. May fourth, Daily Mail interview regarding border closure. May fifth, PSPRS meeting. May tenth, Telemundo interview regarding economic crisis at the border due to travel restrictions. May thirteenth, Newsmax interview regarding border crisis. Same date, Univision interview regarding sales tax revenue shortfall due to border closure. Same date, meeting with potential investor. Fifteenth, May fifteenth, I was invited to the Trucas Truck Club anniversary celebration, their fourth annual. May eighteenth, PSPRS meeting. Same date, Telemundo interview regarding border closure extension. May twentieth, Arizona Sonora Transcendent Leadership Zoom. May twenty-first, Sigo Executive Board meeting. May twenty-sixth, Telemundo interview regarding vaccination numbers in the city and the county, and also, same as all you all, I was, I was there with Jeremy at the hospital the day of the accident in Tucson and, and actually during his passing. And, and then I was, participated with all of you on the funeral and the services and the wake and everything, so, very sad, but, you know. And now, we were, you were discussing a future agenda items, I guess, and, and my future agenda items are, I plan to, John, write this down, John, discuss economic development as soon as July starts. And also, I wanna, we, we need to start discussing now that we're gonna be doing the, I noticed you were talking about the Chaya Park. We need to discuss that since we're gonna start the funding part of it. And also, we need to discuss, I'm gonna bring something else and put it together for you about the employees. I know that we're doing the, the money for them and everything, but I think just because what we're doing now doesn't mean that, hey, well, let's just sit down and wait till next year. I think we need to plan, because we've never done that in the past. And that's why there's so many of them down at the bottom, and, and none of them are going in, in sequence with that, that compare, the classification comparison report. So we need to talk and sit down with that report that was developed. It wasn't, I think it was done in the past administration, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know. When was it done?
Yes.
And, and so that we can all discuss it and see how we can continue with it, you know, and, and because that is a key component for, for, for preparing budgets. You know, we always, we always skip years before we give them a raise, and then when we do give them a raise, we decide to do a two percent. I mean, we gotta do better than that. So that's something we're gonna sit on and, and I think discuss thoroughly coming in July, right as soon as we pass this budget, so. I had other things, but we'll discuss them later. Yes, go ahead, Consul.
I have one thing. If possible, if we as Maran Council can get together and name a park, I was thinking maybe changing the name of Western Avenue Park to Jeremy Britton Park, or the Dog Park in Meadow Hills. I know he liked dogs, so maybe we can name a park after him in his honor, in his memory.
Yes, let's, let's do something.
I'd like to put that as a future agenda item.
Yes, why not? Let's, let's, let's think about that and see what we can do, of course. Mr. Kissinger, you were gonna say something, sir?
I, I, I just wanna say something. When you talked about the Chaya Park, Mr. Mayor, I was on the, I was on the phone call with the State Parks yesterday, and they approved the grant funding for Phase One of the Chaya Park in a tune of a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, so that's very good news for the city of Nogales.
Yes. Very good news. Where are we at with, with you? Okay.
And do you're also visiting?
Future agenda item? Yes, go ahead.
I'm still waiting for the welcome to Nogales signs.
John?
Mayor can definitely put that on the future agenda item, but I, I can give you an update. The, the, the file that we sent them to make the print for the sign itself-
The file that we sent them to make the print for the sign itself wasn't the preferred type of file, so they requested us to redo that file of the, what the print is going to be, where it says, "Welcome to Nogales" and the, and the stuff. So our new housing director is helping me by reformulating or reformatting that picture and we're going to send it to them again and we should be receiving those pretty soon. Three of them.
But we are, we already have, basically the company is doing it.
Yes, they're just got to make them and send them.
Okay. All right.
Once they make them, send them, then we'll, we'll, when they make them and send them, I want to get them here at the city because I want to try to get ADOT to accept them on the right of way. If I unsuccessful that, our backup plan is to go look for the licensing from the several property owners so we can put them on private property adjacent to the highway.
That was my other question. Do we have approval from the other, because you already had the approval from the union?
Right. So we haven't, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We haven't went to, to seek that formal approval in the form of a license yet because our first goal is to try to get them on ADOT right of way. And if it fails with ADOT right of way, trust me, I'll be knocking on Mr. Panasopola's door as soon as that fails.
You will be okay.
Yeah, but to sign...
Oh, to sign?
Yes, yes, ma'am. To sign the, the license agreement that Mr. Massey is working for us to have it ready by the 28th.
You working on something like this?
I think pretty much...
Okay.
But that's the goal, to get it up. Do you want that a future agenda item?
No, you have a great thing, Mr. [inaudible]. I trust you.
Ms. Montiel?
Mr. Kissinger, I would like a presentation on the process of obtaining a business license or I know, I think it's a business license and/or operational license. I know there's a difference, but basically just an overview of what the process is from the beginning to the end for a business person that wants to open up a business here. With timelines and, and all of that sort of neat things on it. Yeah. And one more thing, Mr. Kissinger, I would, going back to economic development, and I know it's the topic and that's what drives this economy, but I would like to put on the agenda to discuss like a future economic development plan that's aligned to the, the general plan that was passed by the voters, which I've been looking at. And, you know, a plan that's like rigorous and makes all of us accountable for results type of thing. And I know it's an ongoing process. An economic development plan is not easy to, to, you know, write, takes some time, but if we could start, and I know someone already mentioned it, but it's been very important to me since I started in January, that we have something aligned to the general plan, like an economic plan. And that's it.
So for the agenda, you want to review the discussion if you try to manage the other plans?
Yeah, a plan aligned to the, the general plan.
Aligned to the general?
Yeah, well, I would think it would be, have to be aligned, right? Yeah. So you want me to repeat it or you got it? Got it?
Okay. Thank you very much. Is that it? Saulo? Come on, Saulo. Come on. No te dejes. Come on.
I'm shy.
Come on, Saulo. Are you sure? You can, you can...
I'll just, I'll just wait for it for them.
During the month?
Yeah.
Take it to them. Okay. Perfect. Whatever. All right, then.